Any updates from the council on any boards, commissions, or committee meetings you'd like to report out? And of course, this is also a time for any reports that you feel compelled to share with the public.
Mayor Carley, I have something I would like to share.
Sure, go ahead Vice Mayor.
Thank you. The Marine Corps 250th anniversary is, I'm not sure if you're exact date, however, they're having a celebration on the, in November. I have provided the exact information to the office city manager. So I would like to ask the council about the possibility of preparing a proclamation in this, for this event in the honor of the service that these individuals have given to each and every one of us.
So if you're asking for that through me as the mayor, that I'll go ahead and accept that and just work with me to, for that preparation so that we can make sure that's taken care of.
I appreciate it. And we weren't sure, and I was asked to make this announcement or make some requests during the meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll go ahead, go ahead and work with me and we'll, we'll follow the policy and we'll make sure that happens. It's, it's a good event. I think many of us are going to attend.
Okay, and the other thing I would like to share is that I know all council members have received an invitation, if you haven't received it, it is coming from the warden of CMS who is giving a tour of her population. And that is taking place on the 17th of September. So if you receive the invite and you're interested, please get your information in as soon as possible.
Yeah, great, thank you. Anyone else on the council, anyone else on the council have any reports out?
Just have a question.
Councilmember Stockton.
So I know that we're going to have a conversation today about the Warming and Cooling Center. I don't know if that would be a more appropriate time or if now would be the time to ask for council to agendize a discussion on homelessness in general, including our warming and cooling centers, you know, I know we're going to talk about that today. But I am also interested in trying to figure out if we could have a discussion surrounding year-long kind of partnerships and maybe putting out an RFP for, to collaborate with some of our, you know, local nonprofits or providers or faith-based organizations to provide additional services, not only during, you know, extreme heat or cold, but throughout the year. And I don't know, so I don't know when that.
So we'll go ahead, we'll go ahead and add that to, we'll go ahead and add that to our agenda. When we have the discussion, if, if the, the feedback is we want to do that, I would say we can make a motion there. Is that correct?
So are you?
Since we're discussing it.
So are you, are you suggesting having that discussion, whether we put it on the agenda during the warming center discussion?
Yes. Is that acceptable? Since, since we're discussing it, so that's feedback coming from the council, so we can discuss it then.
Yes, and then you would add it to a future agenda. But yeah, that's a, that's a fine time.
Is that good? Councilmember?
That's fine.
Okay. Councilmember Wiley?
I just wanted to say that we had a meeting for, with the Travis Two by Two last week or two weeks ago, and it was really good to hear about the Travis School District and how they're starting off the school year. So that was a, a productive meeting. And we did talk about the reduced speed limits around all the schools and how the seat signs are going up and how parents need to be informed. And there's a really good video about why the change in that, that, the speed limit. So that's out, available on the city website. So I encourage anyone to share with other parents and other drivers to view the short little video about speed limits around the schools. And then since it also says attended boards, commissions, and committee members, I just have a question about how, where are we with filling the empty commission spot on the planning commission since we, the applications were due? Have you interviewed people or can you give us some information on where we are with that since it's not on tonight's agenda?
Yes, so as of last week, I received a notice that it had closed and there were four applicants and I've asked and working with staff to begin the interviews as early as this week. It just hasn't happened yet.
So when do you anticipate it coming to us?
Next, next council meeting.
In two weeks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, that, that'll be the, that's the, the objective. And so I've asked, I don't, I haven't seen my calendar for this afternoon, from this afternoon, but I'd asked maybe on Thursday if we could get the rest of the interview scheduled. And so the, the goal would be to place that as an agenda item on the next council meeting.
And then one question about that, will that be an interim position or will that just be that is now the planning commissioner?
It, well, it's not an interim. It would fill the vacancy, that vacancy then still becomes open in Jan, or for the next cycle. So yes, this fills the vacancy, but that vacancy expires in less than six months.
I see.
Yes.
I see, so it's filling the position that was vacated.
Right.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ritchie?
I actually, thank you. I attended the Travis Community Consortium with Councilman Wiley. It was, it was great. It was a brief, I guess, what, the most important thing, Gary Miedekin person, he wanted to kind of get overview, he was on a little speaking tour, just on what to expect for the local possible ramifications of the new, the new bill and the reduction of certain expenses, mostly about healthcare and house and services. So I think he was updating the county staff, which probably would submit down to our staff to it, how it affected the county and their services in the cities. But that was really his main focus was a being that.
And the only thing that I'll report out on is something that's coming this week is the 4C City County Coordinating Council will meet at the end of the Slano County Water Agency Board Meeting on Thursday. One of the items that has come before this council, it's an information only, but it has to do with a report by the health department, county health department on the, the food vendors that I know every city has had some challenges and some questions. There are separate actions that will likely come in the near future from, from our city manager on what a policy and ordinance would look like, but this is a report out. So if anyone's interested, that's on Thursday evening after the, the squad board meeting. So just, just so you're aware, because every city is having the same problem and, and so they're doing a report out. And with that, just a quick report out also, STA meets monthly, so Slano Town, Slano Transportation Authority, that's tomorrow night. I'll, I'll attend that. There is on the agenda, an item to accelerate funding for Jepson Parkway in the amount of 1.2 million. And that's just because of the, the fact that we are shovel-ready with projects. And so the funds that have to be loaded, it's, it's better to keep the momentum forward and these funds roll over and sometimes they can be paid back, but that's an agenda item tomorrow night. And so along with staff's discussion and my review of that to, to support that, it accelerates the work on Jepson Parkway. And so that's a good thing. And then lastly, at least for the Slano County Water Agency, just a little fact, we've had a good water year. So our allotments are very strong for the year and just to put that in a layperson's term, that looks good. So we still have the ongoing problem that is consistent with, with our water issues because the state's trying to figure out what the, what that allotment's going to look like in the future, but at least for this year's allocation, it looks good. So with that, we'll go ahead and move on to item seven, report to the city manager.
I have nothing to report tonight.
All right. Seeing eight presentations, none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. We have a few items, A through E. Any member of the public or the council wishing to pull an item for a discussion? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second roll call.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Yes.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Fremont?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes.
Mayor Carley?
Yes. And we're going to go ahead and move on to item 10. This is business from the floor. It's an opportunity for the public to address the council on any item that's not on the agenda that's in our jurisdiction. Generally, you have three minutes and please come forward and we will hear what you have to say. The only thing I'll also ask, Vice Mayor Chapman, if you could, if you could mute and unmute your, your microphone, it's creating some kind of sounds in here. I think it's coming from your microphone.
Sure.
Thank you. I'll still call on you though. Good evening.
First of all, I have a, an announcement on Saturday, September 20th, the Saturday after this coming one, there will be held the first annual Vacaville Constitution Day Celebration at Andrews Park, 614 East Montavista in Vacaville from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM. I think it's a worthy thing and I'll give the mayor a hand. Secondarily, I wasn't going to bring this up until I got upset over it enough, upset enough a couple of days ago regarding Senator Tim Kane's comments as his not being comfortable with the fact that we have God-given rights because it might reflect in the same way that the Ayatollah controls his people by virtue of the word of God coming through him. And so I got to thinking about it. Simple truth of the matter is we have unalienable rights, that which cannot be taken away. A government granting rights, and that's what he was getting at, they're not from God, they got to be from government. A government granting rights, taking them away, doesn't mean they're unalienable because they can alienate them and they have the right to take them away because they are the presiding force over the whole process. So therefore, unalienable rights are out of the jurisdiction of a, of any government. Went back to the 1828 Dictionary of the American, of the English Language by Noah Webster. I like to think about what our founding fathers were feeling and the oppression they were feeling with government rights coming down upon them to make them slaves. So in 1828, the dictionary came out, this is well within the lifespan of those who may have been alive in 1770s. He states, "God, as the author of all things, has a right to govern and dispose of them at his pleasure." All things do include unalienable rights. He has the right to tell us how to live. He has the right to give us a formula for how to do it. He has the right to name those rights. In the Declaration of Independence, it said that we have unalienable rights, God-given. The Bill of Rights further defined the process by which unalienable rights would be secured. Mr. Kane, let me tell you about governments who have, who feel they have the authority to declare rights on other people. Nazi Germany.
Thank, thank you.
Soviet Union.
Thank you.
And many others.
I'll make sure this gets shared with the council, the Constitution Day then. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here once again to tell you what you don't want to hear. I have said many times, innumerably, this is a bunch of stuff that's taken from the county staff report concerning what California Forever is going to do to Slano County. This was the reason that California Forever pulled their initiative last year because the, everything in here, they have not bothered to refute. They will sit, sit here and make promises about how many thousand jobs they're going to create and manna will fall from heaven, but they haven't explained how this is going to get done without taxpayer money. I spent the day in the Board of Supervisors, learning about how California Forever bought lots of friends in Sacramento, just like they've bought lots of friends all over the place. And pretty much Sacramento is going to dictate to the county just how this is going to be done. And it's going to be done in California Forever's favor, apparently. That's the reading we got from the last, the last version that was seen that the board was working with. Well, I'm not shocked nor amazed, but very disappointed that certain of you wouldn't listen to reason and you decided you would write little letters about, you know, supporting shipbuilding in Slano County. Well, shipbuilding in Slano County, if it doesn't specify Mare Island, means you're playing into California Forever's hands because there is no project that happens to be property that they own that is not associated with the whole scheme. You can't talk about, well, we'd like to do something at Collinsville and not be backing the rest of the scheme. So, you know, you're, you're scrambling after the coins are thrown on the floor. I suggest you go to Home Depot and buy some knee pads, you're going to need it. All right. So it's that, it's down to this. They claim that they're going to build ships in Slano County by 2027. And that's because, now, think about that timeline, that's impossible. But what it happens is this, is that one of the people, I believe it was Mr. Andreessen, controls Sonic Technology. All Sonic Technology does is make small autonomous controlled vessels that they intend to sell to the Navy once they get the bugs worked out. They have $4 billion of investment capital. Right now, they build their, their boats in Austin and they just bought a shipyard in Louisiana. They have no reason to expand out to Collinsville except that they can build a little place there and say, hey, we're building boats here. And they, all they need to do, because their boats are like as little as 14 feet and they're experimental, they'll put something out there so they have a business in being, it's a foot in the door.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brandon Cherry. I'm a resident near Alamo Park and I just wanted to speak on kind of the parks rehab, if you will, and the update there and kind of my concerns on what's going on, if I could share those. So I just wanted to start with why there was no native plants as part of the design. That was a pretty easy thing to do. They take a lot less water and they help support the ecosystems being a native plant. There's not one native plant that was put in there. I think that was a pretty easy thing to implement into design. And so I want to have that on record as to why that was not used. And the, the ones that were used will most likely die soon and then, you know, be another unnecessary expense for the park, park cost. And then I understand that they were putting in the Purple Pipe reclaimed water system to, you know, save water, but then they allowed a lot of the grass to die in large areas. And so will the developer be covering the dead grass that will, or it will be a cost of, of the Vacaville taxpayers? And residents near the area are paying extra tax for Alamo Park, right? And, and if I, I could just ask that the equipment be removed from the grass right near the playground? And it's literally killing the grass for no reason, the bobcat, the trailers could easily be moved, the decompost grant off of the grass. It's surely dying under the equipment and I'm not sure why equipment's being parked on the grass. And, and why bark was used under the tree areas when the park maintenance goes in there and blows the leaves away for leaf management? It's just going to blow the bark away. And they're going to have to have some solution again for that. And there's a large area behind the homes on Brookside where they just sprayed a ton of bark over grass, taking away glass, a grass away from the citizens and the kids for practices and all that. There's like no borders, no rhyme or weasening, there's no weed area, it's just tons of bark that was just, just recklessly sprayed behind there? And just what's the reason for that? So is there someone that, from the city that's overseeing this project? Because it seems like the contractor's just kind of allowed to come and go, they work for like a couple of days and they disappear for weeks on end. I understand now that the grass is, is being allowed to grow in where they've turfed it around the, the park, but, you know?
So what I'd like to do is if you could meet our Public Works Director in the back of the room and maybe he can get your information so that you can have a conversation.
Oh, great.
So some of these, you might even have more comments, but it would be great if we could get some of your feedback.
That was pretty much it. I mean, they're, they're pretty, they're pretty straightforward and simple to, to take care of and, you know, make some solutions that are reasonable and will work for everybody and hopefully avoid wasteful spending, right?
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Before I start my time, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Who sets your agenda?
So, listen, I'm not sure where you're going with this, so this is not, this is not going to be a cross-examination.
A simple.
Combination between the city manager and myself.
City manager along with you?
Yeah, we, there's discussions and preparations, yes.
Okay, so my beef is with you. The last time we were in this chambers, we were, there was an item agendized, we sat through a long city council meeting, only to have the item before, before us, or behind us, brought before us. Tonight, out of your entire agenda, the issue of the Warming Center is the last item on the agenda. When I was on the Board of Supervisors, if the county administrator didn't want to hear from the public, he would try to set the item to the end of the agenda, either wearing people out or people not even showing up because it was a lengthy board meeting. So I hope it's not that you're trying to avoid the public's discussion on homeless items because we're going to continue to come back. We think we have some answers to a very difficult problem, but if you don't allow us to be heard, it's difficult to provide solutions. So I hope you're not stalling those of us that advocate for the homeless. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment, bring it back to the council, we'll move on to the next item. We have no business, public hearings, we'll move on to business item A.
So this item is consideration to publish a request for proposals for voter opinion surveys and public education services on the increases to the general purpose transactions and use tax, also known as sales tax, transient occupancy tax, and business license tax modernization, and approving a fiscal year 25, 26 one-time augmentation in an amount not to exceed 350,000.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Tonight I have with me Ken Metzamia, our Finance Director, to talk about this. Through the quarterly budget updates and budget process, staff have shared that the city has a structural budget deficit that we're trying to solve. The city's had a healthy reserve based on the council adopted general fund reserve policy, but if we don't take action to either reduce, reduce expenses or increase revenue or a combination of both, we will continue to deplete the reserve. Tonight, we're going to recap the budget forecast, including what we've done so far to reduce costs and what we're, we're going to also talk about some potential changes to three different types of taxes, sales tax, transient occupancy tax, or hotel tax, and business license tax that could serve to generate additional revenue for the city. All three taxes would require voter approval and we're not asking you tonight to make a decision about moving any of these tax measures forward, but we will ask you to make a decision on authorizing the city manager to release a request for proposals, to do some voter opinion survey and public education services so that council has an accurate understanding of the public's opinion on tax measures and how we can best keep them engaged and informed through that process, should we move in that way. So now I will turn it over to Ken to talk about the budget.
Thanks, Georgianne. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. So as Georgianne mentioned, I'm just going to start off with just a recap of, of where we're at with the forecast and also the steps that council's taken over the last three years, really when we started to see that our revenues were slowing down. And so this is really the third budget cycle where when you're looking at our revenue growth compared to kind of three or four years ago, our revenue growth has slowed down substantially. If you were to kind of compare where we were at pre-2023, we were seeing revenue growth of about 7% a year. On average, we usually do 3% to 4%. Over the last three years, that just hasn't occurred. So from fiscal year 23, 24 through this upcoming, I mean, this fiscal year that we're currently in, we're seeing revenue growth that's more in the 1% to 2% range. And a lot of that has to do with the things that you hear and then you use inflation, interest rates, and how that impacts our two biggest revenue sources for the general fund, and that's property tax and sales tax. And so in fiscal year 23, 24, kind of seeing that things were slowing down, although our ongoing revenues were enough to cover our ongoing expenses, as part of that budget, what we had to do was start to dip into our, our sizable reserves to fund things such as our capital improvement projects, so street maintenance, things of that nature, facilities rehab. And we were also using our reserves to make additional payments towards our unfunded liabilities. So this is like using a personal budget analogy, we're using our reserves or our extra savings to, to spend down or kind of pay off our credit card rates quicker, credit card debt faster to save on interest. In 2024, 25, which is this last fiscal year, with revenues not growing, you know, as we expected, the fact that, you know, the revenues were still only growing to 1% to 2%, we had to take further steps. And I'll talk about that further in the following slides, but in 24, 25, we paused the ADP, so additional payments towards our unfunded liabilities, and had to continue to use our reserves to balance the budget. With this current budget that we're in, and this is part of the budget adoption process that we, we went through in June, we took additional steps. Council made some really tough decisions on cost savings measures. And so this was involved 2.5% savings from every single department and involved pausing a lot of the pilot programs that were put in place after the pandemic and also reducing a lot of the capital funding. There were no new positions added. And so what we were looking at is basically saving 9.2 million dollars in expenses with this budget that we're in right now. Next slide. And so this slide is our reserve. And so for the general fund, our policy calls for us to have a general fund reserve or savings in about two to three months, so 16 to 25%. And the table on the right shows kind of what our projection is of where our reserve is going to be at the end of five years. And so at the end of last fiscal year, we anticipate that our reserves are still going to be higher than our policy at about 29%. But because of the deficit spending, we're anticipating that we're spending about $9 million more than we're bringing in each year. You see that reserve go down over time. And so at the end of this, this year, we anticipate still being within our reserve, but then over time, that goes down. As you can see, that we're below our policy by the end of next year and without any changes, you'll see how that kind of plays out with the, the reserve going negative in future years. The forecast doesn't assume wage increases and so these would be, if we were to, you know, we're currently going through negotiations, but any sort of wage increase would be on top of these amounts. Additionally, there are other items that we know are potentially coming up in the future and that's kind of what we call our underfunded or unfunded items. So things such as our radio system replacement, cybersecurity, fire station expansion, these are things that, you know, if we were in a better financial situation, you would obviously want to plan for these, put money aside for it, but that's not currently built in the forecast, given the fact that we're currently deficit spending. Next slide, please. So this chart is kind of a 10-year history, kind of going back from fiscal year 20, then going out to fiscal year 30 of where the general fund has been and where we project it to be. So the blue columns are your revenues, your red line going across are your expenses and commitments, and then the green line is our general fund reserve. And so historically, the city is not deficit spending. This is really something that we've really had to deal with more so in recent years. And so as you can see in fiscal year 20, 21, 22, as I mentioned, we were bringing substantially more revenue than we were spending. And then starting in fiscal year 23, you know, we started to see our revenue slow down and then we also added a lot of our, our measure on programs in fiscal year 22, put money aside, about $10 million for park improvements, things of that nature coming out of the pandemic as well. And so, and so because of that, that deficit spending, although we've kind of maintained a reserve above our policy level, you see how that tracks and kind of goes down over time, as I mentioned in the previous slide. Next slide. And so as part of the, the budget that we're currently in, this is the budget study sessions that took place in May and June, we council, you know, approved the reduction of expenses and this involved really freezing 20, or freezing three positions, delaying 22 positions, basically 25 positions citywide were held vacant as a cost savings measure. Additionally, as I mentioned, we also reduced capital funding and also other discretionary expenses to help balance the budget. And as, as I mentioned in one of the first slides, the total of these savings are about 9.2 million dollars. And although the focus of our, our budget adoption was really looking at ways to save costs and the cost cutting, the other side of that coin is also looking at revenues. And really that is the focus and what you'll be hearing about this evening is this year, the focus is looking at ways that we can potentially increase our revenues and things such as, you know, looking at credit card processing fees. Currently, the city absorbs a majority of those costs and that costs about 400,000 to 500,000 dollars citywide. And then sales tax, the transient occupancy tax, and business license tax are things that Georgianne will be talking about a little bit later on in this presentation. So this is another vigil on the frozen delayed positions. So as I mentioned, it's 25 positions citywide with three of them being frozen and the rest being held vacant for this year. And that results in a savings of about 4.4 million dollars. Next slide. And this is a chart on the budget reductions or cost savings measures, just to recap of kind of what was approved back in June. And so these are cost savings measures that were put in place for, for this year and combination of the 2.5% measure on pilot programs and reducing our capital costs. I'll now pass it to Georgianne.
So now, now we'll talk about those three potential tax options. A little background on Measure M, the sales tax measure currently in place, which brings in about 21 million per year. The sales tax measure currently in place, which brings in about $21 million per year. In 2012, following several consecutive years of state funding takeaways and millions and cuts to city services and staff, Measure M was a quarter cent sales tax approved by voters for five years. With Measure M set to expire in 2016, voters approved an additional half cent and extended Measure M for 20 years with a sunset date of 2038. Measure M is a general tax used for general municipal purposes such as police programs, firearm paramedic services, street lighting maintenance, parks beautification. These funds are really instrumental in how the city executes its strategic plan goals and enhances the quality of life for our residents. Measure M funds are utilized to fund 29 full-time positions, including seven in the fire department, 13 in the police department, four in parks and rec, three in public works, one each in economic development and city manager's office. This is not an all-inclusive list, but Measure M has also funded park improvement projects in every district, vehicle and equipment replacements, homeless encampment remediation, the fire apprentice program, downtown alley reconstruction, Ullatus Creek repairs, and fire pilot programs such as the council district benefit program, youth scholarships, and neighborhood cleanups. California has a state mandated minimum sales tax of 7.25% with the majority of the jurisdiction statewide having a higher sales tax to support and maintain local services. Vacaville's sales tax rate is 8.125%. However, most of the sales tax revenue generated does not go to the city. The state's base sales tax rate is 6%, and that goes to the state's general fund to support health and social service programs and the public safety augmentation fund held by the county. The city receives 1.75%, which is comprised of the 1% Bradley Burns tax allocated to counties and cities to use at their discretion, and then the 0.75% Measure M tax with the remaining sales tax distributed to county local transportation funds to support transportation funds and the library system. This chart shows the sales tax rates in Solano County. You can see by the asterisks, four of the seven cities in Solano County increased their sales tax rates in November 2024, and Fairfield is planning to go out for a sales tax increase in November 2026. And as you can see, all the way on the left, Vacaville has the lowest tax rate in the county. This chart shows the impact of each percent increase on the sales tax. Vacaville, as I mentioned before, is at 8.125% now. If voters approved a half percent sales tax, that would generate an estimated $14 million in tax. You can see the projections for the other increases and the impact on the total sales tax rate. Sorry, my mouse is off the screen. Based on previous studies, staff estimates that 50% of Vacaville's sales tax revenue is generated from out-of-town visitors. We do plan to do some additional analysis on that, as well as the impact of a sales tax increase on Vacaville households, so we'll bring those back to council. The California Department of Tax and Fee Administration website also provides some detailed information on sales tax exemptions, which I know probably our residents are interested in what those would be. And some of those include most grocery store food items are exempt, prescription medicines and certain medical devices, items purchased with EBT and CalFresh, and sales for resale. And again, there's others. Moving on to TOT, the Vacaville, City Vacaville charges a local transient occupancy tax, or TOT, also commonly referred to as a hotel tax, to visitors staying in local hotels and motels. This hotel tax is only paid by visitors to ensure they contribute to maintaining the roads, infrastructure, public safety services, and other resources they utilize while staying in Vacaville. The TOT is applied to their lodging bill. This tax was established in 1966, and administrative changes have been made over the years, although the last rate change was in 2000. Looking at the chart, you'll see where Vacaville stands compared to our neighboring agencies. And if you look all the way at the right at the total column, that will show you the full impact. For Vacaville, the total rate is comprised of 8% TOT, 2% Measure I excise tax, and 3% hotel business improvement district assessment, which goes to visit Vacaville. They are also planning to increase their assessment by 1% in the near future. Each 1% increase amounts to roughly $250,000 annually that can be used to support local essential services. Staff are currently reviewing the business license tax ordinance, which was last amended in 2000. In Vacaville, the business license tax is based on the number of employees, which is a fairly outdated model. Many cities have gone to a model where the tax is based on gross receipts or revenue. We don't have all the data yet needed yet on a new structure for business license, so we've currently recently kicked off a study with our consultant, HDL, to analyze the current business model, business license model, the impact of an increase to that current model, and moving towards a gross receipt model. We know that small and local businesses are part of what makes Vacaville special and what drives that small-town feeling that we have, even though we're a city of over 100,000. And we've asked HDL to specifically analyze the impacts to those businesses and see how we can keep those low. HDL will also look at neighboring jurisdictions and potential other options for tax structure changes. And once the HDL analysis report is complete, we'll bring those findings to council in a study session, and that will, we're expecting that to take place in December. This chart shows a comparison of Vacaville's business license tax in neighboring jurisdictions using some general business categories and showing the number of employees and revenue. You'll see the first couple rows of the chart, really there aren't real significant changes, but as you move down, the number of employees increases and also the number, the amount of gross receipts increases, you'll see those changes can be significant. Looking at some of those bottom rows, you can see we might be missing out on some revenue opportunities with our current model. Looking at the ballot measures, all three potential tax measures would require voter approval of at least 50% plus one, which is a simple majority. The funds would be locally controlled and cannot be taken by the state, and it would require public disclosure of all spending and annual audits would also be required. So what would an election cost? What would it take to move these forward? At last count, Solano County registrar of voters shows Vacaville has 62,537 registered voters. In November 2026, we'll already be holding a general election for council members, so the cost for any additional ballot measure is 50 cents per measure per voter, or roughly 31,500 per measure. Should the city embark on all three, the total cost would be just under $95,000. Tonight, we're recommending a request for proposals to select a consultant to guide us through the ballot measure process, starting with developing a strategy for public input and awareness to ensure we're engaging and informing stakeholders. We want to understand, as you do, I'm sure, the opinions of Vacaville voters through statistically valid surveys, starting in early 2026, to determine the feasibility of passing tax measures at the November 2026 ballot. The results of that survey would also guide the approach for outreach and education, and then we'd do a second survey later in the spring to understand the impact of the education that we've done so far, and to further refine the engagement strategy leading up to a November election. We'd also be looking for a consultant to design an outreach and engagement strategy, creating outreach materials, and facilitating community meetings. A few other things we are including in the request for proposals, we want the consultant to provide education and marketing, including a dedicated webpage for the tax measures, provide some articles, social media posts, and community meetings. Really, the goal is to really inform the public. For communication and reporting, we'd be tracking, they'd be tracking research and education and outreach, generating a top line and cross tabulation of survey results and discerning voter patterns. We'll want their guidance with the ballot measures themselves, including drafting the ballot language, questions, and arguments. And finally, enacting the tax measures, should that be the direction we go. So next steps. For the business license study, we've already begun that with HDL. We'll bring those findings back to council. Other information we plan to bring back to council, some of which I've mentioned tonight, includes additional information on the sales tax and the estimated per household cost analysis, the proposed percentage increase on transient occupancy tax, and findings from the HDL study shifting from an employee-based to a revenue-based model. If council approves authorizing the RFP, the process will begin quickly, with publishing the RFP by the end of the month would be the goal. The first voter opinion survey would take place in early 2026, and based on council's direction, tax measures would be placed on the November 2026 ballot. I know when we're talking about having a budget deficit, $350,000 is a large expense, and we've had to come to this cost. Really, we looked at our neighboring communities and that have done, you know, recent tax measures, that have done similar efforts, and so taking those into account, this is what we're estimating would be the not-to-exceed cost. Of course, we'd be, you know, looking to negotiate any agreement in the best interest of the city. So the recommendation tonight is that by simple motion, the council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to publish an RFP for voter opinion survey and publication services on the increases to the sales tax, TOT, and business license tax, and approving a fiscal year 25, 26 one-time budget augmentation for an amount not to exceed $350,000. And with that, we are open to questions and comments.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Any questions from the council? Before I open it up? Vice Mayor Chapman?
No.
All right, I'll go ahead and open it to the public for any questions or comments. Yes, the public's open.
As I recall, when we did Measure M, when I was on the board of the Downtown Vacaville Business Improvement District, we had a presentation from the city manager, and the Downtown Vacaville Business Improvement District voted to support Measure M. And I know that we went out and campaigned very hard for that. I think one of the tributes to the city of Vacaville, if you weren't around in that period, is there's not many cities that vote 2/3 to raise their taxes, which is what we did. So I'm very encouraged that the citizens here will want to keep Vacaville where it's at, but I would not wait until 2026 to begin the outreach campaign. I would not wait till 2026. I think it would be very good for the council and each council person to work in their districts, put together just an ad hoc committee from various constituencies, talk about a program, because you never know what the mood is of overriding issues that might interfere with the vote next year. Waiting till next year to try to prepare for 2026 vote, you don't know what other things may be coming. It may be better to move a little more quickly. Number two, I don't agree that the current per employee is outdated. I agree with you that it doesn't work because not everybody's in it for the greater good, and not everybody reports accurately. So I would, with that one, I'm with you on that, and I'm sure we would want to continue to support the kind of public works. I told our director of public works, if he leaves, I'm leaving, because we have the greatest public works director in the country here, as he did with the transportation system before that. The next point I'd like to make is a little bit of a personal point. I noticed you said "all income," but I think they need to do a little further research. A lot of income is governed by other statutes, and it's determined, for example, there's exempt income, but that requires other fees, other taxes to be submitted. I just think a little more research should be done on that subject. But I know that in my heart, I would certainly be supporting anything that would help us continue to move Vacaville forward. Last point, as a senior, I think one of the issues I would use would be the fire stations. Believe me, everyone that's my age or even a little younger wants those paramedics as close as possible, and I think that would be a very specific strategy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As a beleaguered taxpayer, I would just say that I see by the presentation that, yes, you know, income is falling short, but I have sat here through many council meetings and seen you ladies and gentlemen vote to expend money in some things that were very questionable. I wonder what physical restraints will be imposed in order to keep the future, you know, council from overspending again, because no one's yet explained how you're going to replace the 20-some-odd million dollars that you've taken from the rainy day fund, and you've done that just to finance ongoing programs. Maybe some controls on spending should be brought forth along with the request to raise taxes.
Yeah, thank you. All right, I'll go ahead and close this and bring it back to the council for any further discussion. And council member Stockton?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. $300,000 is a lot of money when we're deficit spending. Is there any internal employees that we have that could take on this task to spearhead it and potentially save us money? Or could we hire one? What is the, why do we have to go with a consultant that's this expensive, I guess is my first question?
I would say it's right now, I don't think we have the staff that have that technical expertise to do a statistically valid survey and that have the experience in polling, which is really going to be critical for any tax measure. We could certainly look at other options, but right now, I would say we don't have staff on it currently.
Okay. It's just, I just feel like this is a lot of money for this, and I recognize that, you know, we, you know, we need to generate money to provide services. I get that, and the voters will ultimately decide. But I'm just curious, you know, if $300,000 for this type of analysis is really what it's going to take to put on the ballot what we know we need, right? If we already know how short we are in these different areas and what we need, I'm curious as to what information we're hoping to ascertain that's going to cost us $300,000 as opposed to just recognizing that we need this much money and the voters can vote to decide whether or not they're okay with approving that sort of, you know, tax, whether it's TOT or licensing or sales tax.
Sure, I think, great question. I think because there's also, we're talking about three tax measures, it's not just one. It has become a little overly complicated. There's a lot that goes into it, and that voter education piece is really important, having that website, having someone to facilitate community meetings, really take the pulse of the community that has experience in polling and ballot measures. There is some technical expertise required, so there is just a lot that goes into it. We aren't sure it's going to cost $350,000, but we don't want to have to come back and keep asking. So based on our estimates, we think this is the right not-to-exceed amount. We would, of course, hope it would come under.
Council member Wiley?
Thank you for the information. On the slide 15, you were talking about we currently have another study going on and looking at the employees versus the tax receipts. So is there information from the ongoing study that can be used toward this, or what was the cost of that study and how long is it going to be going on?
So I don't have the cost for that this evening. I could definitely get it to you. It's definitely a lot, it's less than the $350,000. I think it's actually under $50,000. But that study that's going on, there's two parts to it. Like, one part is updating the ordinance itself, just the fact that our ordinance is so outdated that administratively, it is kind of hard to administer it. And so part of the, the part of the work that they're doing is updating the ordinance, but the other piece is kind of the revenue, kind of looking at other cities and kind of the models that they use as far as the business license tax. And for a timeline, that is an item that we expect to have a draft, I think sometime in November, and then that coming to council, given that December-January timeframe, that would be kind of the time schedule that we're looking at. And so we just had our kickoff meeting on the revenue side kind of earlier, actually, I think it was last month, later, late part of last month. But as far as the timeline, that would be coming to council, kind of in that December-January timeframe.
So then information from that study will be used to make decisions about changes, but it won't give us enough, it has nothing to do with the ballot measure?
No, like what the consultant is doing for this effort is more so if you were to go with these three different types of models, like they'll use some modeling of, you know, if we were to apply, let's say, CPI versus if we were to change to like gross receipts and kind of base up what's gone on in other cities, what that looks like and what that potentially would bring in revenue. But then the other piece of it that Georgianne had mentioned is also what is the impact of small businesses? I mean, that's one of the things that we're definitely concerned with is, you know, if we were to change, it's not just chasing revenue, but also sort of what are the impacts to small businesses versus other businesses as well? So it's not anything dealing with kind of the surveying part of it, it's more so kind of doing the modeling of revenues and the impact on businesses.
And I know that this decision is going to be fundamental for the city going forward and fundamental for success, because if you don't do it right, it doesn't pass. Because I was part of Travis's partial tax, and it wasn't done correctly, and then we didn't get the partial tax passed, so it has to be well thought of. And I agree with, starting now, not in 2020, And I agree with starting now, not in '26, because people need to see the need, especially on top of, we just asked for an increase in our water rates and our sewer rates and everything else is going up as well. So what is the deadline that we need to have a decision for what goes to the ballot? What's our, if something goes, which one goes? What's the deadline for the, with the county registrar?
I can answer that question. So for that one, it is the first meeting in August. It's usually the beginning of August when we have to submit the ballot measure. So we will bring back information from the polling results, all of these studies, back to council in December and January, start educating the community, do another polling, probably in May, and bring back the results. And then the council will decide, let's put these particular ballot measures on the county roll. And then we have the month of June to finalize that language and submit it to the county.
So that's when a decision will be made?
Yes, that's when the final decision will be made.
Right. Whether none are put forward, or three, or two, or one. All right. But regardless, our out-of-pocket expense is going to be in the neighborhood of $350,000. All right, thank you.
And this number of $350,000, we actually reached out to City of Benicia, Sassoon City, Rio Vista, those are the cities that recently passed their ballot measures and the amount of cost that they had paid for one tax measure. So then they, we kind of extrapolated from that number and said, okay, if we were to do three, this is the number we're looking at. And it's just an estimate. Once we do the RFP, we'll do our best effort to negotiate the pricing.
And those other Solano County cities were successful with the help of this?
For whichever vendor we select with, yes.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I just kind of want to echo, I guess, a little bit with Councilman Stockton, Wiley, and the gentleman in the crowd. I also agree, one thing is, I think time's the essence. I remember our last study session, 2025, I shared with some members of the council, not just a list of this, I shared all Bay Area counties, every single city, in order where we fall, every single city. And it's, we are not just the lowest in Vacaville, we're lowest everywhere. So if someone's like, oh, I want to go somewhere else that has lower taxes, good luck. We're it. Let's go and drive to Nevada. It's, starting now is so important, because I walked my butt off with my kids for the school bond and it failed. It times as essence, education, and keeping it simple stupid. Like, we got to let people know, there is expense for this, but the real cost, if we don't get this right, is, like I said before, the people that show up at my dad's door, he's getting older too. I found a story on, like, he had another incident, a pack of fire showed up, amazing, amazing. Like, that's the risk. It's public works, it's our police and fire, it's our, it's the people who serve us. If we don't get this right, we failed getting a school bond to help education go forward. We will lose opportunity to keep the level of service. And so we need to make sure the messages, it's not statistically just broad, it needs to be very, keep it simple. Here's the cost of a $7 item. It was $7.19 before, it's $7.32 now. Like, don't freak out. But that quantitative will keep our level of service where it needs to be. Like, we don't, we're going to be in trouble. If you really care about our community and want to be safe, we need to protect ourselves from ourselves. So we need to really push hard to make sure we keep this quality of life. So that's it, that's it.
If I can just comment real quickly, because what I've heard is that we think, what I'm hearing from council is that we wouldn't start until 2026, and that's not totally accurate. If we get council direction tonight to move forward with the RFP, we would start some internal efforts to start spreading the word and, you know, working on this right now. So we wouldn't wait until 2026. It'll take us a couple months to get a vendor selected, should council give us direction to move forward. But we would start efforts now to start some public outreach and sharing the information with the public.
Vice Mayor Wiley, excuse me, Vice Mayor Chapman, do you have any comments?
No comments, everything has been stated. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Silva?
Yeah, I'm really troubled on this one. You know, just taking lessons learned from the school bond that didn't pass. I'm not hearing, I feel I'm pretty well-connected with different folks throughout the committee. I don't know everybody, not everybody talks to me. But I feel that the different things, I do have a pretty good pulse, and for them to support any increased tax, I think it's going to be a huge uphill battle. And so part of me, you know, for me, as a representative of our constituents, it's, I'm not even confident, I'm still having a hard time going out and putting out $350,000 effort to bring somebody on board to go forward. You know, and I've seen, our experience here on this council within the last couple of months, and I will say the word reckless in the sense where we approve resolutions and out of that, you have, you know, us going above and beyond what I understand what we approved based on written. So if here, if we're going to say we approved $350,000, we're going all in on up to that amount and we're broadcasting it publicly for something that in itself, you know, maybe it will pass, maybe things will change a year and a half, you know, a year and a couple months down the road. But, you know, there's a lot of interesting things going on in our nation right now. And, you know, small businesses are hurting, and, you know, if we have a finite pot of funding to put back into it, a lot of the conversations that I'm hearing, and again, it's just, it might be the folks who I'm predominantly talking to, it's really concerns about how we continue to reinvest back into our school systems, we continue to grow. The comments that I'm hearing on here, this is to go to support salaries. I'm not hearing anything about actual procedures. And it kind of goes back to a comment about, to what programs are we supporting. And so that in itself is going to be a challenge, because we still hear complaints from the public about us allocating Measure M funds, they put back into the community the past four, you know, four or so years, to improve our parks, to improve our recreational programs, to improve, to, you know, pursue these different pilot programs. So I think in that sense, there's still a huge level of mistrust that we still got to figure out how to navigate through. I think a lot of that starts with this elected body, on how we establish trust, one, within ourselves, two, from there, within the community that we, that supports us. And it's a very diverse one. So for me, I'm pretty torn on it. I think there's also other elements that, as far as the efficiency from how our city governs, that's a part of that trust-building communication. You know, there's certain things that I think when you're, when you're embedded in the process, we see things one way from an organizational structure, hey, we need these folks, hey, we need to be competitive for this and that. But I think, again, to be able to get 50-plus percent to support it, I think that, that's going to be a challenge. So those are my thoughts.
No question. I appreciate it. Well, we're running a corporation that's roughly a quarter of a billion dollars here. That's what, that's what the city of Vacaville is. We spent way more than this to study downtown and city lighting in the last month. We're talking about a $9 million structural deficit that isn't going to go away unless we strategically plan. I personally, I look at $350,000. When you start looking at, I appreciate Councilmember Stockton's comments as far as, do we have staff? It sounds like it's really technical. You start adding what the cost of a few personnel, we already see how many personnel we're either cutting or delaying. This isn't something that I see, having been former staff, that you can just pick a few people in your organization and say, why don't you run with this? It just doesn't work. We need expertise. We need, as in my estimation, we need to make informed decisions, because one of those decisions may be through this process, this community does not support it. And so therefore, hypothetically, if the survey comes back and said 20% support a tax measure, well, I would suspect that myself and this council might say, well, let's not put a tax measure out. But we won't know that unless we go through a process. And so to bank on waiting the course of an entire year, hoping and praying, kind of hearing some of what's happened out of other, you know, school bond measures or other types of tax measures, you have to be strategic and intentional. And I don't see this as saying we're all in, saying we're going to put anything on the ballot. Anything on the ballot is, is up for the community to decide whether or not they're willing to support it. And, you know, Councilmember Silva, to your point, the community has to believe and trust in how it would be used. And to the public's comment, are there any guardrails? Some of us have been around since the beginning of Measure M and what that looked like and what the Great Recession is. And so I am concerned that we're in a $9 million structural deficit. We've made decisions over the last few years, right or wrong, sometimes hindsight has a really clear lens, you know, hindsight, you know, we can look through the lens of the glasses and say, we could have anticipated, maybe we should anticipate things. And that's just part of business, especially anyone who's been in business. And Councilmember Freeman, I'm sure you've got comments, and I'll get to you in a second. We don't, we don't, we, we don't fund schools, we fund parks. I don't like, I don't want to think that any of us is up here trying to do anything that's reckless. But I do believe that for me, I want to know what this community wants and expects, and whether it's TOT, whether it's a combination of any type of measure that's going to be put before a ballot, that when we decide to do something, and I have to decide by next June, we have carefully polled the community, we've understood what it is that is willing into the other comment, this is what's going to come in the near future, what are those pressures? I have seen other mayors in other cities struggle so desperately this last ballot cycle, because if they didn't get it, the next meeting was, how many bodies are we cutting? And I've lived it in the Great Recession, working here. And I don't want to wait until we're in that position, because we're willing to spend X amount of dollars on a lighting study. And yet, the very thing that's going to keep the lights on and the services to the city, we would then somehow say, this isn't an important enough reason to spend money while we're deficit spending. It's a, it's kind of one of those moments where you have, you have to decide, are you willing to spend the money to understand how dire of a situation and what decision you need to make? For that reason, I will support this. I don't like spending money on, on something where you think there isn't a return. I think that there's a tremendous return, because it's an informed decision on what way, what may or may not go on the ballot next year. So, Councilmember Freeman?
Yes, thank you. I look at this from a business perspective. When I was running my company, it was maybe a tenth, less than a tenth of what the budget of Vacaville has. So I know that we have, it's really easy to criticize government and take a look at government and wasteful spending and what you think is wasteful spending and, and come to conclusions. So, you know, I know that I've done that oftentimes myself in life like that, you know, this, that government wasn't my friend. You run in a business for 25 years, and now that I am part of our local government here and I am seeing the kind of talent that we have, you know, our new city manager, our city attorney, I mean, everybody, I mean, the department heads, and how hard our, our people that work, that are employees of Vacaville work for the city of Vacaville. And I don't see recklessness. I always thought that there was recklessness from an uneducated point of view, but I, now that I have seen, you know, and there are some things where you just scratch your head and you go, really? You know, but I know that if it was me and I was getting ready to, and I was running my business and I was deficit spending and I needed to increase costs to my customers to cover the deficits that I had, and then the other things that I have to consider is I've got really good people working for me. I don't want them going somewhere else, so, you know, you have to keep up with cost-of-living increases, and I had to do that as a business. To keep good help, you got to pay them well, you got to treat them well. And there are, you know, there are points where you have to put your foot down and there's times where you have to tighten your belt. And I know that the city of Vacaville has been tightening their belt. They've been looking at ways to save money, they've been looking for ways to reduce costs. And I'm not in favor of even raising taxes. I'm, I've just always been anti, you know, in, I'm just not in favor of raising taxes. But I'm in a different position now and I understand the need for it. And so if I was looking at it as my own personal business and I roughly have a $300 million budget and it's not working for me, you know, and I would tighten my belt and look at all of my department heads to tighten their belt and ask them to do that, and you still have inflation that's been rampant over the last five years and all kinds of things have come at us that are out of our control. If I was going to take a look at raising prices for my customers, I would want somebody to help me figure out how to do that. So I'd take a look at $330,000. It's a big pot of money, but I want somebody that knows what they're doing to help, to guide us through this process, to figure out, you know, how, what's the best way to do this, because with the end in sight, we, we have to know what we're dealing with. So, again, I know I'm just kind of rambling on, my thoughts were a lot clearer when I was sitting here by myself, thinking about it inside my head, but trying to put that into words. So, again, I'm not in favor of raising taxes, but I also know that we have a responsibility to our city to make good decisions. And so I think for myself, again, I'm not in favor of spending $330,000, we're deficit spending, but this is going to be something that's going to be helpful to our city. Hopefully, it'll upright the ship. And through responsible spending of our city manager, our city employees, our heads of our departments, I have faith in them. And so I'm going to move forward with probably, as a matter of fact, I'll make the motion if we're ready for that.
I just want to add a few comments, if mayor would allow me. So I heard the concern around $350,000 from a few of you, and I totally agree with it. This is based on the research that staff reached out to multiple cities and we then extrapolated the numbers. We will come back to council once we have identified the vendor, and then the consultant contract will be approved by the council itself. And we're hoping if we are able to release the RFP in the next couple of weeks, so probably by end of October, beginning of November, we should be able to bring it back to the council, and we'll do our best effort to negotiate the contract. A couple of things that this consultant or the firm, whoever we select, would help us with, based on their experience across different organizations, they will guide us on different processes, they will create this informational material. And as Georgia and Ken mentioned in their presentation, the whole process will be very transparent, we'll create a website, we'll start reaching out to, you know, I know I'm doing a presentation with Chamber of Commerce tomorrow, but we'll start reaching out to our faith-based communities, we'll start reaching out to neighborhood associations, HOAs, whoever wants to invite us, we'll be there to educate you, give you more information as needed. The only thing I would caution is, I heard some comments around start the campaign now. The concern is, once you start the campaign, then we cannot do the informational outreach, because now we're officially campaigning about a ballot measure, which is not really on the ballot yet. So we will have to discuss with the council on the timing. Once we submit the ballot to the county, that's when we can start the campaign, or we'll have to have a campaign committee, which is outside of the city. So if I am going out and doing the informational outreach, I can't be part of the campaign. So there are some regulations around that. So we will be bringing all that information back to council, once we select this vendor, the process, the timeline, and the outreach efforts. And I'm open for any questions, if any council member has some.
No, I appreciate that, that update. And for some of us who remember Measure M, yeah, if you were on the campaign, you had to separate work, because you're now part of it. So, Councilmember Freeman, you started making a motion. I know there's some lights, we'll get to the lights, but if you want to go ahead and make the motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
I'll say.
You have a motion, a second? Okay. Councilmember Stockton, your light was on first.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, I'm not, I'm 100% for giving the community the opportunity to vote on this. There is definitely going to be an impact to city services if we don't mend the shortfall that we have. I just think it's pretty obvious how much we need. And so my no vote tonight will be because I think that it's going to cost us money to put it on the ballot. This money could be used to put it on the ballot, give the voters an opportunity to decide. I think we have enough information now to know that we need the money and where the shortfall is. So that's, that's just where I am right now. I just wanted to clarify that. And while we're having a conversation, the TOT stuff, I don't really have an issue with the TOT. It's not a significant amount of money, but I, I think if it mirrors where with the TOT. It's not a significant amount of money, but I, I think if it mirrors where other people are staying in the county, I don't have an issue with that. I will have an issue if we, you know, significantly raise taxes for business owners, specifically the ones that are under three, you know, there was that 300 plus. Those 300 and plus, they can absorb some of that. But our small businesses have concerns about them being able to absorb significant increases. And then as far as the sales tax goes, I, I think we know what we need, put it on the ballot. But I don't think we need to spend oodles and oodles of money to do that. So.
Well, and just to your point, I think what the surveys will allow us to do, based upon all three of them, is understand the pulse. Because to say that we put a ballot measure based upon the feedback, it could be, there's no way hypothetically, that the highest amount of a, of a sales tax increase might poll at 20, but a moderate one might poll at 45, and a reasonable one might poll at 55. I think that that is, and even in the TOT structures in the, the other business licenses, as those get polled, it can provide the kinds of feedback that could inform us of what will go on the ballot that is good for the city, that the public will get behind based upon a secondary polling. So the process, I think, will really inform us, which is why, I respect your.
And I don't disagree with your analysis, Mr. Mayor. I think for me, we should only ask for what we need, not what we can get.
Councilmember Silva?
I'll come to you, Vice Mayor Chapman, in a second.
I agree in most part with Councilmember Stockton. One question I have for the city manager, or whomever, can this be phased in, or are we just approving this bulk item tonight? I know we're going out for RP to see what comes back. And I'll just say phased in, because one of the, you know, maybe there's different, you know, different benchmarks that need to be met before we continue to move forward. Can that, would that be worked into that, or could that be worked into, as soon as this passes?
Yes. So tonight, we're just getting the approval to release the RFP, not to exceed this amount. So once we release the RFP, we'll get the responses, we'll bring back the dollar amounts based on the vendor we'll select, to say, this is the vendor, it may be $200,000, it may be $300,000. And then, once the vendor is selected, they will develop the timeline, the ballot language, informational material. They, they will do much more work than beyond just doing the polling. And the polling is usually plus or minus 5% accuracy is what their expertise is on. So that's why it is critical for us to do the polling for all three, so we can decide what do we want to do with which tax measure we want to put on the ballot. Because if we delay or phase it in, we're missing the point on the education part of it. For example, you know, for the business license, we'll come back in December or January, the consultant is going to review six different cities that have gross receipt model. They will look at the three cities in detail, they'll provide us three different models. We'll come in December and say, these are the models, which model does the council approve? Then we'll take that model, go back and do a little bit more deep dive, and come back in January to say, these are the tiers, this is the expected increase based on the size of the business. And again, based on the council's directions on the January for the business license, then that will decide what are we going to put on the ballot measure. So there's multiple steps. You will be informed at every step as we're developing these methodologies and the reports.
And I appreciate like, all the, all the information. And there's a couple of things, if it comes up, it comes up. But I just, you know, the other thing that I just find very, just, to be honest, I'm still a little baffled on just like how the whole sewage rate went, went about. And I see a lot of similarities in this sense, in this sense, in this particular situation, it's different in the sense that it's something that's going to go, would go on to the ballot, that people have to vote for it. Like the whole water, sewage, water rate, you know, there's folks who supported it very publicly and then, and then didn't. And so like, when we talk about building trust for folks, that doesn't do anything for that. And in fact, it even puts public against council members for that. And it erodes our ability to advocate the, the trust that many of us have within, with different folks in our community. And so, you know, again, like, that's just to echo or compliment the comments that I personally made earlier on how we navigate absolutely something that would be beneficial to the community, but whether or not our community members feel it's beneficial to them.
Vice Mayor Chapman, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. Listening to my colleagues, you're all making great points. I've been involved in a few very successful campaigns to pass ballot measures. The key, I feel, is making sure that you inform the electorate. They need to know the urgency, where the money is going. Data tells a story. And transparency is, is key. I'm, I'm in favor of, of spending the money. Sometimes, and don't take this the wrong way, you have to spend money to make money. And spending this money is to help us get ourselves out of debt and stay ahead of, stay ahead of being indebted. The, the, I had mentioned, keep taking our time. It's very important to have a good consulting firm. There is a lot of data that they gather and bring back. And then with the data, they, you're able to see exactly how much of an increase you need in order to get where you need to be. So I, I, you know, I, I do not like having more tax, tax measures put before the voters. But times are hard. They're hard for individuals, they're hard for the city. It was got to take care of all. So if it's time to call for the question, I'm ready to do so.
Yeah, thank you. There's, Councilmember Ritchie, you're the last comment, then we'll go ahead and roll call.
All right, thank you so much. I'll be very fast. It just kind of piggybacking off of almost what you said, you'd spend money to make money. This really echoes off of Councilman Fremont's comment. You know, I understand the risk and fear of spending the money, but you have to spend money to make money. Like just, I'm, I'm not retarded, is, he's, he's sold and done. I'm still very much engaged as a small business member. And it is hard, it is stressful. I had a Zoom thing today, it was like, I was sweating on the screen because we're trying to find ways to spend money in a hard time to invest in the future. It's tough. So I just, I want to make sure that the message is like, we're not recklessly spending money, but it's a take money to make money. But this isn't just like a little flash in the pan. I did the quick math right here. The cost of $350,000 at the tax measure at the 28, $24 million annual, we will make that up in six, sorry, 21 days. It's like 21 days. Not, it resets. Let's say that tax measure stays for 15 years. 21 days is return the investment to ensure public safety, quality of life, and level of service. Like that's the messaging we need to get to people. $350,000 divided by 28 million, do the math, it's 21 days. If we can't invest 20 days in our own community, then what are we talking about?
All right, with that, can I have a roll call?
Councilmember Silva?
No.
Councilmember Fremont?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Stockton?
No.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Yes.
Mayor Carley?
Yes. So you say this will come back, the RFP will go out, and then it'll come back probably next month?
Probably end of October or beginning of November.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for the presentation. All right, we'll move on to item B.
Yes, this next item is a presentation by the Vacaville Chamber of Commerce for the 2024-25 Annual Report, 2024 Progress, 2425 Progress Report, Approval of the 2025-26 Annual Program of Work, and Authorization for Payment of the Membership and Services Fee in the Amount of $61,800. Director Burris is here to do the presentation.
Good evening, Director Burris.
Good evening, Mayor Carley, Vice Mayor Chapman, and members of the City Council. Don Burris here, Director of Economic Development Services. The item before you for your acceptance and approval is the Vacaville Chamber of Commerce 2024-25 Annual Report and Progress Report, and the 2025-26 Program of Work. Presenting this information this evening is Chamber President and CEO, Matt Pulsifer.
Good evening, Mr. Maher, Vice Mayor Chapman, council members. As Don just introduced myself, or me, I'm Matt Pulsifer. I'm a new president/CEO of the chamber. It is my pleasure to come before you this evening and give you a report of how our chamber's been doing this past year. Before I get started, I just wanted to thank my board of directors behind me, who came out here in full force, to give me some support. I've had the opportunity to meet most of you, some of you, Councilmember Richmond, we have not met yet, or Vice Mayor Chapman. I look forward to meeting both of you. I am new to the chamber, I've been in the air for a little while. Most of you, we've met. I'm a veteran out of Travis, retired out of the Air Force, and excited to be here. So what I want to do is kind of go through this kind of quickly. I respect you guys' time, you have a full plate tonight. You have our slides in front of you. And what I'm going to do is just kind of go over some of the key highlights I think are important. And then, of course, leave the floor open for some questions for me at the end, if that's okay. Next slide, please. So the chamber is a 501(c)(6) membership-based organization, right? That's a private organ that allows us to advocate for business policies. We are made up of small businesses, different sizes, independent contractors, entrepreneurs, we have different sizes, even some of our largest employers in Vacaville are members of our chamber. The opportunities that we provide our members are really some key areas that they get after. It's the marketing, they join us for marketing, they join us for advocacy, networking, education, and leadership development. A business advocate is another one that we get after. Next slide, please. So as you see up there on the screen, we have about seven key target areas that we have committees for, in which we operate under. I just want to focus on a couple of them. Number one are ambassadors. They are business owners and leaders in the industry that are, are very passionate about the chamber. So they volunteer their time. I don't want to call them cheerleaders, but they're, they're basically cheerleaders for what we do. And they get after advocacy, they help us with events. And like any good organization, you can operate with folks, without folks who are passionate about the mission of their organization. Business issues and advocacy, as our city manager just mentioned, we have a committee that goes and works on business issues that affect our community here in Vacaville. We have a committee that forms, and we have forum meetings every other month. And tomorrow, we're holding one, we invited her out, we're excited to have her tomorrow to address our chamber members and talk about issues that are affecting our city right now. Membership's another one, that speaks for itself. And then the TRAFD. I'll just tell you, the Travis Regional Armed Forces Committee, very dear to my heart, as a veteran, I appreciate what this chamber does to support the men and women at Travis Air Force Base. It's affected me over the seven years I was stationed there before I retired a couple years back. Next slide, please. Up before you right now is just a, a quick snapshot of our membership and income. As it states up there, this was as of June 30th, our membership sat at 483. That's the key number that I want to emphasize, because in, in '24, our numbers were 460. As I speak to you today, we're at 503 members. We've had the fastest growth in the last three months in our chamber's seen, and I could find in recorded history. So we're getting after it with our new staff and our membership. There's an energy, which I hope you guys will see tonight through my reporting of our activities this past month, or past year, excuse me. The, the income breakout has been relatively the same last couple of years. Most of our income comes from membership fees. We do a little fundraising from here and there, and then we have the city agreement that helps us out with our operational expenses. ARPA, as you guys are aware of, is about 7% to 8%, it flexuates for our overall budget. So some key areas that we have that are critical to our agreement. There are the five work plan categories that our services agreement with you as a city, we have to get after. Workforce development's one of them, economic development, and information and outreach services. We have a few, did we, did we miss a slide by chance? Go through ours? Nope, I guess, I guess not. There was one slide that we had in there, but for the sake of time, let's just move forward. Thanks, Don, I'm sorry about that. Go back to where you're at, workforce development. So one of the areas that we have in our chamber is our Vacaville Chamber's Educational Foundation. Private organizations, that's a 501(c)(3). Last year, we awarded two $2,000 scholarships to members of our community. They apply, they have a board of volunteers that goes through, and we select winners. We're actually starting the process here in a couple of weeks to go through our selection for December. Our goal is to increase the amount of money and the recipients that we can give out scholarships to in December of this year. Economic development, we held our second annual Launchpad event and to promote and develop entrepreneurship. Now, last year, we had 104 registrations. This happens in November, excuse me. So November of '24, we had 104 registrations. That was up from 69 in '23, right? So an increase of over 50%. We already started the planning to hold the next one on November 20th. We're in partnership with the Slona County Development Board, Economic Development Board, ourselves, and you guys in the city. So we're looking forward to having another great event on, on the 20th of November. For information and outreach services, key thing is we held six business issue forum sessions featuring speakers within the industry, and the city, and the government, to help educate our members and the public. And as I mentioned a few minutes ago, we're having our great city manager come out and talk to our members tomorrow morning. We're excited about that. Next slide, please. Looking forward, the shop local Vacaville is a program that we have been spending some time on. With the ARPA funding, we push local business opportunities here. We host their information, help them sell their product, or develop their business through that, through that program. Looking forward, we know that that funding ends in June of '26. And so I will be engaging with the city to figure out how we want to keep that going, if that is something the city wants to do. I personally, in the few months I've seen, been here with the chamber, would advocate that we keep that going. So I do know that there's some challenges ahead of us as a community, but I hope that we can keep that going. Launchpad is another great one. We're plans are on the way for our third annual Launchpad event that will take place November 20th, as I just mentioned. It's grown with registrations from the '23 to '24, and I hope to get another increase of 20 to 50% participation for this year. And then Leadership Vacaville, what a great program. I hope you guys know about that, but that is an opportunity that retrain folks about our city, about our community, and develop leaders that go back into the business community, right? In June, we graduated, we had a program graduation, had 13 business leaders go through the program. Right now, as I speak to you this night, we have 18 that signed up for our class starts in October, and we got two or three more in the queue. So I'm all about growth and pushing it, and I'm not slowing down. But I really am proud of our team and what we're getting after to have the impact for the community. Next slide, please. This is our board of directors for '25-'26. You know many of them. They're great leaders within our, our community. I appreciate the support, being here. And to the right, bottom right, is my staff. I'm the only full-time member of the chamber, unpaid status. The rest of my team, who are fantastic, are part-time, and we are, in my opinion, killing it with what we can do, with the, with the tools we have given us. Are there any questions right now about this part of my presentation?
No, thank you for the presentation. But I will say that it is nice to see that the, there is an increase in the membership. And also, the leadership program is, is fantastic. So there's, there's a lot that, that happens within the chamber.
Right.
And I know that I personally appreciate what the chamber means to the community and to this council. So, Councilmember Silva?
[inaudible]
Vice Mayor Chapman, we're getting some feedback, if you could maybe.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm watching the.
Oh, that's okay. There's a delay, that's why.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to, are, we're going to keep, I'm going to say it real quick, the scholarship program, there was a couple program, there was a couple students from a, a local biotech, uh, comp, uh, program at Solano Community College that were recipients. Um, one of them's working locally at Live Space Labs, and, uh, after she's earned her master's from UC Berkeley. And then, uh, the other one is, uh, just, the last couple of months has been working at, uh, a cell and gene therapy, so make growing cells that are, uh, taken from human beings' bodies genetically engineered with a virus and, uh, to fight off disease. So she's working for a company out there in SAC, so.
Please let, all the people who donated, let them know that, um, that, that funding is going, uh, backful to not just helping their workforce, that workforce development, but all the lives that they're, they're coming across and, um, hopefully saving, like literally saving.
Great, thank you. Thank you for that feedback. I'll let them know.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Um, so my, my comment actually came, uh, back of, of you, um, so thank you for your service, but like, you, you're exactly what, I think, the Chamber, small business, um, of all places you've been in the world, you could have been many a place we stayed here. Um, and so here's a little shout out, it was like, um, I haven't told people about it for years, I was a small business owner, have your little ace in the sleeve, but you're exactly what a program that I fought really hard a couple of years ago to be part of. It's called Skills Bridge. And so I fought really hard, I'm a legacy Skills Bridge. I've hired a boom operator, I've hired a loadmaster, all retired from Travis, and you edge, you employ them, they had six months of paid education, I had to really build it out. But there's a great opportunity to have Travis Airmen and Women stay in our community. If everyone got on board, and it's not easy, but to do the right thing, every small business should be a part of Skills Bridge, to empower and employ people, and I, I've done it, and it, it was amazing, so.
Sir, we need a ton. Love it. I did Skills Bridge myself, right out of the military, loved it. I went for, for the federal government, that was great, but I'm happy where I'm at, and I love that attitude. Let's talk, sir, let's talk. Because I do want to bring that here to the Chamber, so.
Councilmember Fremont?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you and thank the Board for all of your work. Uh, you, you're my people, uh, you know, running a business, uh, and how hard it is because you have, you know, you're dealing with your customers, you're dealing with local government, state government, federal government, regulations, regulations, roadblocks, and more regulations, so I had us off to you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We got one last part, uh, just a couple more slides to talk about the program of work. I owe that to you guys, I apologize, I got a little-
That's okay, since there's no numbers on here that say 12 or 14, I, I have no idea if we were finished.
Yeah, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Same as, as the starting point, you guys know what the Chamber's all about, so I'm gonna forego that, let's go next slide, please. Again, another breakout, right, of what we see, maybe you can see some numbers on this one, this is how we're composed as a, as a, uh, Chamber right now, but 483 was our number in June 30th, as I did these, uh, information and submitted to, to the city offices. Since then, we're up over 20, almost 25 members, um, and lots of various aspects of industry that they come from and how they were represented. Very diverse, we represent, I believe, our community. Love it. Don, next slide, please. Okay, so one of the great programs that we had, um, the last couple of years is Genetech Goes to Town. They gave $17,000, uh, out to the community to be spent inside the city of Vacaville, small and medium-sized businesses. That money didn't go into Fairfield, it didn't go in, out of the county into Solano, it stayed in Vacaville. Now unfortunately, Genetech has been bought out, but Lonza has just came in and they joined the Chamber enthusiastically, so to me, I'm the call of the win, right? It took a little bit, people were like, "Yeah, we don't know, it's not the same culture," right? But I have meetings set up the next couple of weeks to go out there and meet with our staff, and so I'm excited about the future and hoping to keep, keep that culture going. Comments Magazine, that's what we publish, you know, every quarter, it lists all the businesses within our Chamber, um, we do some advertisements, it's no cost to the folks, you can grab it, anybody can come in and grab it and learn about some businesses within our community. Digital and social media, we've been blowing that up, our, um, you'll, usage rate and, uh, what's the term I'm looking for? Usage rate, participation, and customer, uh, feedback and engagement has been going up too. Ribbon cuttings, uh, we do those to celebrate, right? Opening businesses, that's one thing I'm gonna talk to you, Councilmembers, about when I can meet you through one-on-one, is some of the frustrations our members are, are telling me about what it takes to open up a business and why it takes so long. I've had complaints of folks telling me it takes six months, six to 10 months of paying rent before they even clear the process to get a license to open business, and I just fell out of my seat when I had that, when that conversation. So, uh, in the future, we want to talk about how we can help, um, folks open up businesses sooner, but we also do ribbon cuttings to celebrate milestones. We have a business member who was celebrating their 30 years of business here in Vacaville next week, so we're gonna do ribbon cutting on the 18th, look for our information, I'd like to see some of you guys out here to celebrate that, uh, milestone for that company. And then advertising, we advertise on a whole different, uh, forums and media. Next slide, please. Real quick, uh, this is just our outreach, what we have going for the future, right? Our, um, Leadership Vacaville starts again in October, I just gave you some of those numbers. Our business outreach, uh, and retention, I'm working to develop that and, and to keep, um, businesses not only open but engage with them, dialogue, finding a way that I can advocate on behalf of them, uh, with you as the Councilmembers, to make life easier for our businesses here in Vacaville. The Launchpad, I mean, it's not already, that's happening on the 20th, and then Lemonade Day. I believe you guys know what Lemonade Day is, but that is an opportunity to teach our young ones about businesses. My goal, uh, is to have that thing blown up in '26. We're gonna have the best year we've had. Every year's gotten better, I intend it to be even a higher standard for next year. And then lastly, these are our numbers. Through the Sop Local Vacaville, which is a, a deal that we have with you to run the, this program, we had new businesses registered, up 7% last year. Page views, alright, we advocate, we advertise for this a lot and push it, but we had a 289% increase in traffic to our websites. Uh, I think that's pretty significant over last year. 22% for new products that our businesses have advertised on, and new site users went up 42%. I think those numbers are, are pretty solid for anybody who's looking to have growth. Next slide, please. And again, on behalf of our Board, I appreciate your time tonight, uh, and if there's any other questions or comments.
Yeah, Councilmember Stockton had a, you had your light on.
Thank you for the presentation, um, love Lemonade Day, um, love that you do ribbon cuttings, that you, you know, that you celebrate the different businesses, but I have to tell you, uh, when I attend, whether it's the, the breakfast or the Night of Champions, what stands out to me the most is the excitement and like bu, I want to say buzz, just the quality of the people that you have in your organization, right? That networking and those relationships, I, I'm seeing them continuing to grow and grow and grow, and it's the people that you have working with you that I think really stand out and explain why you're having such tremendous success. So I'm really excited to hear your report, excited that you're helping so many different people and businesses and the families that are associated with those businesses, whether it's through ownership or shopping there, you know, all, all of the above, but I, I just wanted to really compliment you. When, when I got to go to Night of Champions and hear you celebrate the people within your organization, it made it abundantly clear why you're so successful. So I just wanted to leave with that and thank you for what you're continuing to do with Vacaville and for the business community here.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that very much.
And the only comment that I would say is, is on your, your data, the number of businesses is great, but how many employees that actually represents? So you think about that, and so if you have a way of reporting that, I think that that would be good, because there, there's a larger number there, right?
There is, sir.
There's a, there's a greater family of-
I'm smiling because you said something that I told myself the other night to make sure I, I, I grabbed that data, and I've been so busy, I, I didn't get to it, but thank you.
So we're thinking.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Wiley?
I just want to say thanks for the information, it was very helpful for us, and thanks, I think you reach out to the public a lot, and certainly to your business owners, so great job to all of the Chamber and the Directors and members, thank you.
Vice Mayor Chapman?
I want to thank him for his, uh, report and let him know that we have met.
Great.
Oh.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am, sorry.
Well, well, she's in the, she's in the, up there right now.
Thank you.
I had to do that.
Thank you. I'll open it up to the public for any comment. Seeing that, I'll bring it back, and, uh, the, the motion that is listed is to receive the report and to approve, uh, the budget for this cycle, and it's on the, on the screen, so do we have a motion?
I have a motion.
So we have a motion, a second.
Sorry, did, Don, did you have any more comments?
Sorry, no, you, you caught the light. So we have a motion, a second, roll call.
Councilmember Fremont?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Yes.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Mayor Carley?
Yes. Thank you for all you're doing and look forward to that next ribbon cutting. We'll move on to, uh, item C.
This is authorization for the City Manager to execute a second amendment to extend the term of the 2024 Downtown Vacaville Business Improvement District Management Agreement to March 10th of 2026. And again, Director Burris will do the presentation.
Good evening again, Mayor Carley, Vice Mayor Chapman, and members of the City Council, uh, Don Burris, Director of Economic Development Services. This evening, the item in, in front of you is, um, a request from staff to extend the Downtown Vacaville Business Improvement District's Management Agreement. This would be the second amendment. To start our presentation, I want to give you just a little quick background on how we got to where we are today. Um, so, uh, at the February 20, February 25th, uh, City Council Meeting, um, the Downtown Vacaville Business Improvement District, um, acknowledged that the organization, after having performed, um, um, an evaluation and analysis of their funding, uh, it was determined that they have insufficient funds to continue operations. At that time, they did make a request to the Council for an additional $245,000 for fiscal year '25-'26, uh, that would be in addition to the $150,000 that is already budgeted for the organization for fiscal year '25-'26, our current fiscal year. Uh, at that time, the Council made, uh, no decision on the funding request. Uh, following, uh, the meeting of the 25th, we had three subsequent meetings, uh, March 28th, April 22nd, and May 13th of 2025. At those meetings, uh, no decision again was made on the funding request. Also, uh, at the May 13th meeting, uh, the Council did request, uh, a future study session be planned so they could continue, uh, the conversation and discussion. So to accommodate the Council's request, uh, staff brought forth, uh, a recommendation to extend, uh, the management agreement to August 31st, um, of, uh, 2025. Uh, subsequently, uh, after that was, uh, performed in May, uh, we lost the office assistant, uh, who resigned from the Downtown Vacaville Business Improvement District. Following that, in June, we also lost the Executive Director who resigned, who resigned from the, from the bid as well. Um, so that left us with our current status of, uh, the Board of Directors are now managing the operations of the bid, and they're doing their best to maintain operations and continue to host the events that they presented to the Council and programs that they presented to the Council at their, um, renewal. Um, so to continue the work, uh, to help determine, uh, and identify a solution, uh, for the bid's financial situation, um, city staff has been continuing to meet and work together, uh, with the bid, uh, as well as our big four partnerships, and just to remind everyone, our big four partnership is the City of Vacaville, uh, the Vacaville Chamber of Commerce, Visit Vacaville, and the Downtown Vacaville Business Improvement District. We leaned in our big four partners to be part of the conversation, to see if we could all come up with some, uh, ideas on how we can help, um, identify some form of resolution for the financial situation that the bid is currently in. Uh, so what was determined is that we really did need, uh, some more analysis, uh, to prepare a good recommendation for the Council, and to help with that analysis, uh, staff met with the California Main Street Organization, um, which is an organization that provides resources to help cities, uh, revitalize their downtowns, and then staff also met with New City America, which is an organization specializing in the establishment and management of business and community benefit districts. So I do want to add that, um, those meetings did take place with our big four partners. Um, the meeting on the, um, the 7th, uh, was with all the big four partners as well, and then we did ask them to return, uh, to their organizations and have conversations with their Board of Directors and their leadership, uh, to see if they had any thoughts or ideas on how we could resolve, help resolve the situation with downtown, uh, Vacaville. Um, our last meeting was on August 27th, and at that meeting, uh, we were able to meet with, uh, New City, excuse me, at that meeting, we all mutually agreed to hire New City America, uh, to help with the analysis. Um, and, let's see, um, staff is here this evening making a request, uh, to approve the second amendment, uh, we have done one amendment, uh, to the agreement, but to approve a second amendment to extend the management agreement until, um, March of 2026, to give us more time to do some analysis and come back with, uh, a recommendation. Um, so at the September 23rd Council Meeting, we'll be bringing in New City America, and they'll present a scope of work for creating either a property-based Business Improvement District or a Community Benefit Improvement District, and I'll define both of those for you. Right now, we have a, um, Business Improvement District where, um, the organization receives, uh, the majority of its funding, uh, from the assessments that the city collects, and then we, as a city, provide a fee for service. Um, the difference, uh, to a property-based improvement district is that we will now assess the property owners, uh, within the boundaries of the Downtown Vacaville Business Improvement District. They will also be, um, um, asked to pay an assessment that would be attached to their, uh, properties taxes each year. Uh, then a Community Benefit Improvement District is a little bit of a hybrid of both of those. Um, the property owners, as well as the bid, will all be assessed a fee, but the fee won't necessarily be attached to the property owner's property tax. So in the last two scenarios, whether it's a P bid or a C bid, what we have added to the mix is now that the property owners are also providing some form of, um, revenue to help the organization be successful. Um, so what we prepared for you is just a really general, uh, task schedule, uh, for this proposed, uh, P bid or C bid, and, uh, we will have a more detailed schedule for you at the September 23rd meeting, but we wanted to give you some idea of what that looks like right now. So in the month of October, um, there would be a feasibility analysis and a survey developed that would be distributed to all of the downtown stakeholders. Then in the months, uh, between October, November, excuse me, the timeframe between October and November, uh, we would create a steering committee, conduct more outreach, um, and then review the property owner survey. And then November to, uh, December, we would finalize our survey results and recommendations, and then in January, we hope to be able to come back with a written report, uh, uh, for the city and for the Council with results of the investigation, recommendations for implementation and a timeline, and formation feasibility, meaning is this actually feasible to create a P bid or a C bid as a means to help with the financial situation of managing our downtown? So, um, our, our recommendation to the Council is by simple motion, approve the second amendment to the 2024 Downtown Vacaville Business Improvement District, District Management Agreement, and authorize the City Manager to execute the amended agreement. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions from the Council? Councilmember Wiley?
If you go back just one slide, and you talked about, okay, by simple motion, you're gonna decide whether it's a P bid or a C bid, you know? So who makes that decision? Is that a decision the Council makes, or do the property owners make it, or does the steer, staff of the P bid? Who makes the decision which it's going to be? It was on one, the other-
Oh, okay.
-slide right before that.
I'll go back.
So submit it, so then you decide, is it going to be a P bid or a C bid?
So, um, what New City America will present to us will be findings, their, their recommendations from the findings to recommend either a P bid or a C bid.
Right, I understand, then who makes the vote? Who decides that? The Council or, or who?
Yes, ma'am, the Council does make that decision.
So we're the ones that make that decision?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Silva?
Uh, the ULI that we approved, the Urban Land Institute, I forget that acronym, ULI report that we approved maybe less than a year ago, um, that, in there, it said that we're not ready for a P bid. So what, what has changed from that time, from that study, the publication of that study till now?
So working with New City America, they are the premier organization in the state of California. Uh- of California that specializes in the development of P bids and management of, excuse me, management of business districts in general, not just P bids, but the business districts in general. So, we think that a recommendation coming from the experts would be a little more informative for the council to hear the results from that organization.
So, then what is reliable from the ULI?
I'm not sure how to answer that question, council member. I think they did provide us with quite a bit of information on how to make improvements in our downtown and with the unreinforced masonry buildings. Not that their recommendation was not a worthy recommendation, but we do know that New City America is the premier organization. They're currently doing work actually in the city of Fairfield and have helped to create some of the most successful business improvement districts in the state of California.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Wiley?
So, just based on what you just said, so, the decision to choose New City America over the other one, you know, we didn't make that decision, did we?
No, ma'am.
So, I guess I'm just not understanding why we weren't involved with that decision, but now, we're going to be involved in this decision. So, how was, how did they decide on New City America? What were the really great things that made them the choice versus the other?
When we say the other, are we referring to the Urban Land Institute, their recommendation?
Well, the other one, there was a select, like downtown, the Greater City America or downtown, whatever the other one was that you were talking about?
California Main Street Organization.
Yeah, the Main Street, yeah. So, you looked at Main Street, you looked at this, so why was this selected as the one we're listening to? Just answering, just inform.
So, the California Main Street Organization did provide us with really good information as far as operations of how bids more, how do I want to say this, how the bids can operate, and they did provide a few ideas on how to generate more revenue, but their recommendations didn't really address the structural issues with what we're seeing with our bid. So, that's why we needed to speak with another expert in the field to help with the whole structural issue of our bid.
All right, thank you.
I do appreciate that. Council, or, let me ask Vice Mayor Chapman, do you have any questions?
No questions at this time.
Okay. Councilmember Stockton?
Yes. Director Burris, you were present during these conversations with both the Main Street Group as well as the America Group?
Yes, I was.
Okay, and is it also your recommendation that this group meets our needs of what we're trying to do with our downtown?
Yes, council member, it is. I've actually had an opportunity to work with New City America when I worked for the city of Redwood City. They came and did something very similar in that community as well to take a look at the P bid that had been created, that they helped to create. So, I can say personally that I have experienced good results working with New City America.
And they're your recommendation?
I'm sorry?
They're who you recommend?
Yes.
Okay, that's it.
And I think, just for clarification, maybe it would help from what I'm hearing on the council. ULI was not brought in here to address, discuss, or make final or direct recommendations about our bid, were they?
That is correct, sir.
That was just a secondary observation because they deal with downtowns, correct?
Yes.
That's right. That was more to address the unreinforced masonry buildings, but with expertise because of what they do, to give us the big picture. And the big picture is, is we knew that we're not ready for anything, and I think even back then, we would have said, we're not ready for anything else, based on even what Councilmember Silva, what your ask was, because there's a structural problem here, and we keep looking at a problem and looking for a solution and not being able to find it. And so, it's my understanding that through your work and staff's work and city manager's direction, stepping into this, working with our business community to really try to lean into what could work.
Yes.
And so, here we are. We've been struggling with this, with the council, I think. I remember one meeting where we got to the point where we were exhausted, and we didn't even know what else to say. I think it became clear, we need some clarity and some direction, and so, I appreciate that. So, my only question on that was to clarify, ULI had nothing to do with what we're talking about tonight. It just was a secondary recommendation.
Correct.
Observation, not recommendation.
All right, I'll open up to the public for any comment. Yes, come forward.
Hello again, town town business owner Ted Deema, Clipper Cargo Jewelry and Coin. I think it's important, and it brings up a subject that's woven through many of the motions that have been put before you tonight. One of the things that concerned me is you had a, if I, I've got half a shelf at home of the Vacaville Downtown Parking Business Studies that have been conducted here over the last 15 years. Last year, a highly respected organization, the Urban Land Institute, delivered a complete study to you, acknowledging the input of the city council, the city staff, and they made certain recommendations. Actually, one of the recommendations was that a P bid was not feasible right now. Maybe that's why this proposal was put on the shelf and a new proposal is coming forward. When the city came to the downtown, I'm currently not on the board, when the city came downtown and wanted a P bid, we changed the bylaws, created a committee, held a public meeting for public, for property owners, and did everything we could to move in that direction until our funding, the legs were cut off, in my opinion, of commitments that were made that were not followed through on. So, I'm going to deliver to the city clerk for delivering to the new city manager with the pages folded here to show you what the recommendations were of this highly respected institute. And when it comes to proposals with a minute left, I wish the city would do a better job of negotiating with these consultants. My first presidential campaign was in 1960, and I was also part of the first presidential campaign team in 2000, no, 19, trying to remember now, 19, I think, 2000. I was personally flown into Ohio to coordinate the senior vote for the state of Ohio. I could pick up a phone and tell you every issue those seniors wanted, or what their position was when I flew in. So, when you negotiate contracts with consultants, I wish there would be a stronger negotiating position from the city's point of view about what these things really cost, because all of the information needed for this, any campaign you want to do, whether it's this or another one, believe me, I could pick up a phone right now and most of it's already there. Okay, sorry, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? Seeing that, I will go ahead and bring this back to the council. The recommendation is to approve the second amendment and authorize the city manager to execute the amended agreement. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I just clarify? I'm not clear, I'm a little confused, I just need to clarify what exactly we're voting on and not voting on. So, are we just, how much is being asked for and to continue the current operations of the bid? That's what we're voting on tonight, to continue operations of the bid until March. How much is that? And is there anything else a part of this?
So, today, we're just voting the extension of the contract through March 10th, 2026, and this is already approved as part of our budget. The other thing we're doing is, because it's an amendment of the contract, we have to bring it back to the council, but the P bid item will be coming separately to you at the next council meeting.
So, that's a separate issue?
That is a separate issue. That is, we were just providing a background on where we are with the bid and what the next steps look like.
Thank you. I'm okay with that.
That's okay. Councilmember Stockton?
Yes, I just motioned that we accept staff recommendation, one and two.
We have a motion, second. Roll call?
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Yes.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Fremont?
Yes.
Mayor Carley?
Yes. All right, with that, we'll move on to item D.
Good evening again, council members. For this presentation, I have Sergeant Stefanoni with the Police Department with our Community Response Unit, or CREW for short. Let's see, at one of the last council meetings, we had a request from a council member to bring back the Warming Center sooner than later, so we're doing that tonight. Let's see, with council approval, a little bit of background, with council approval, the old Greyhound Bus Depot located at 1040 Mason Street has served as the Warming Center for the past two winter seasons. The goal of the Warming Center is to provide safe and temporary relief from extreme weather that presents a threat to life. Council allocated $50,000 of ARPA funds to support the Warming Center the first year, and we've continued to draw from those funds, and we have just under $17,000 still available. The trigger is to activate a Warming Center as outlined in the extreme weather annex is excessive cold at or below 32 degrees for two consecutive days, factoring in wind chill, or at or below 40 degrees with a forecast of heavy rain for four or more consecutive hours. The Warming Center operations are, they're really a collaborative effort. We partner with the faith-based community and homeless advocates who serve as navigators, providing outreach and connecting our in-house community with services. Internally, we partner with CREW, Public Works, and our public relations team. The table that you see on the screen shows which months had activations the past two years, and how many nights, how many total people utilized the center, and how many total nights were utilized. Some people used the center one night, some multiple, others came in, saw what we had to offer, and walked right out, kind of runs the whole gamut. For last year's activations, the temperatures fell between 32 and 40 degrees, with wind chill being really the determining factor on several of those nights. I shared some of this with the council at the prioritization session in March, but thought it would be good to give you a recap. Benefits of the 1040 Mason Street include that it's centrally located in town, it's an available city facility, it's self-contained, it's really all just one big room with bathrooms, the size has met the needs for the use the past two seasons, it's accessible by City Coach, and is easily monitored by PD. Challenges with this location are that it's located within an existing shopping center, wasn't planned or really designed for that use, and the shopping center falls within the Peabody Allison Specific Plan project, and from that point, a Warming Center isn't necessarily the best or highest use of that location. And I will see if Sergeant Stefanoni wants to provide the PD perspective related to benefits or challenges of this location. Turn your, yep. Yeah.
The assistant city manager, and I spoke in great detail about some of the other locations. Logistically, this is probably, well, not probably, this is what we agree is the best option available as far as city-owned properties. If there's any specific questions or concerns, I'm happy to answer them.
Well, we'll talk about the next alternative option, and then maybe you have some other things to share. Before we talk about community centers, I know that FEMA trailers are an option that's been suggested, and there are some additional challenges and costs with those, including where would we put them, that also has appropriate utility connections. So, to that end, we have continued to focus on existing city facilities as they're most readily available and don't require additional expense of rent or securing an additional location. Working with our Parks and Rec team, we are feeling pretty confident, should council provide direction, we could make community centers work as a Warming Center. The benefits of community centers are sometimes similar to the other location. They are city-owned, in good working order, they're fairly centrally located, and they are also available by City Coach, who we partner with to provide free transportation to and from when there's activations. The challenges with community centers are that they are very busy with parks and rec programming and rentals, because they are large facilities with many rooms and offices, we need some additional security measures to limit access to other parts of the facility. One of those measures would be to have a staff person on site during activations. These locations are also harder to monitor from a PD perspective, and I don't know if you want to share anything else about that, or some challenges that we've had with community centers is cooling centers, which is slightly different.
Some of the issues we've had in the past were some of the lingering effects with people. Once they close, people kind of hang out, cause some other problems. Recently, one of the facilities, either somebody stayed in on purpose or found a way in after hours, that police department had to go out and deal with and contact. Obviously, some of the secure information that's inside some of these city facilities is also one of the concerns. The property on Mason Street obviously doesn't have that issue, which is another reason why we strongly considered it.
Yeah, I think one of the other benefits of the 1040 Mason Street is that, you know, it's got windows on all three sides, police can actually drive all the way around the facility at any time of the day, so they don't necessarily have to, you know, if it's past the time that the crew's gone, you know, patrol could come by, easily see kind of what's going on without having to get out and go into the facility. So, next steps, we are looking for council to provide direction on the location of the Warming Center for the upcoming winter season. With either option, we'll continue collaborating the same way we have, we'll also continue contracting with security and custodial services and providing those free transportation options through City Coach. And so, this is meet strategic plan goals one, three, and four, and the recommendation is really just that council receive the update on the Warming Center operations and provide direction on the location for the upcoming season. And Sergeant Stefanoni and I are happy to answer any questions, take any comments.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, this clearly was placed on this agenda, and I appreciate the comments. We can have a side conversation about priorities, however, it was placed on the very next meeting because that was the ask, and so, it was added to the agenda. I'm going to go ahead and open up to the public for a comment. Before I do, but I'm going to have Councilmember Stockton, I think that was your ask to bring it back, so I want you to go ahead and...
Thank you for the presentation. I think my concern that I've stressed is that, you know, initially, when we found this location, it was, the shopping center, the people who have businesses there were led to believe that this was, you know, this was the location for them that year, and it wasn't going to be in perpetuity, and it seems to be in perpetuity. So, the first thing I want to say is, I 100% agree that we need to provide or figure out some sort of warming cooling center for Vacaville, but I think that we're almost thinking too small in that aspect. What I would really like to see, and the reason why I brought up the FEMA trailers in the past, some of that, and I would love to know if you reached out to anybody that offers the FEMA trailers, what the costs were, because what I'm really looking for is, you know, just nine miles down the road, the city of Fairfield has figured out a way for a community partnership with some of the nonprofits and a local church to provide kind of a more flexible format to not only provide shelter, but also services. Hopefully, that's happening when people visit here, I'm hoping that there are services that are offered. But what I, you know, I guess what I'm, what I'm kind of asking is, is, you know, I would like to move it somewhere else, even if it is one of the other locations, simply because I don't, I don't even know if the Greyhound station is zoned for occupancy. I mean, is it? Do we have an answer to that? Is it, is it, are we legally allowed to house people in that as it's currently zoned?
I don't know the answer to that, I don't know if our Director of Community Development might know offhand.
All right.
Thank you, council. Yes, the zoning and the use of that building was reviewed thoroughly before it was brought into action as a Warming Center, and it meets the city standards.
Okay, thank you. So, I guess what I, what I would like to do, I mean, if we have to right now... So, I guess what I, what I would like to do, I mean, if we have to, right now, come up with a solution, I would like to move it to either U-Lattice or to the Three Oaks. I think that that would have less of an impact. I also think that it would require maybe less of a security/policice presence in those locations, because in the past, the business owners have been pretty persistent, I would say, in wanting to make sure that their businesses are protected. And ultimately, I think there are some negative consequences with maybe folks that could utilize that service not wanting to take advantage of it due to the heavy police presence. I've been in police for, I've been, I've been in law enforcement for over 20 years, I recognize that we cannot arrest our way out of this problem, and we want people ultimately to find, you know, ways to become mentally, you know, competent, or be able to take care of themselves, address their mental health needs, as well as, you know, address any sort of substance abuse or alcohol issues that they have, right? And so, having police officers right there may be a deterrent, and there's a time and a place for that, but when it comes to people freezing outside, I just don't think that's the most accurate, the best use for putting this in that location. What I would really like to see, and, you know, I'm hoping that today can be one, you know, the start of a discussion, or at least a discussion today, is, you know, what would it look like to create an RFP process for some of these organizations, local organizations that, you know, specialize in providing care or assistance for the unsheltered, or are faith-based organizations, to partner with them, similar to what Fairfield is doing with, like, Bay North Church, to where, you know, if we are subsidizing them, if we have some sort of insurance umbrella policy that could protect them from liability, you know, those are some of the concerns that have been brought up to me. I've looked at some of what Fairfield has been, you know, has proposed with some of these community partnerships, and they're, they're like $50,000, $25,000 to provide, you know, an annual contract with some of these organizations. Now, I think that the trailer, you know, I reached out to one local provider that provides these throughout the state for different municipalities, it's just nine miles down the road, and I'm sure there are other folks that would build these things, and they're less than $75,000 to have four rooms, as well as a bathroom, and they're all ADA accessible from the factory. So there are options out there, I just don't want this to be the default. I think that if we look at these FEMA trailers, or something like that, and these community partnerships that provide more than just shelter, but also wraparound services, I think ultimately, we're going to expand upon what we're able to do to help these folks get out of homelessness. So, that's kind of what I was hoping to get, right? Not only to, like, you know, move this somewhere else so that we're not impacting these businesses that are also struggling, but also to maybe relook at how we're approaching the warming and cooling center in addition to the flexibility that may provide additional opportunities to provide additional aid throughout the rest of the year. I mean, if we have trailers, I don't, and we have organizations that are willing to put them there, or volunteers, or want a contract with the city, I'd love to hear that. Like, that opportunity and what people think about it, right? I don't want CREW to be the, you know, the only way people can get help through CREW and only CREW, right? And I think they would agree with me with that, too. I think they're, they're one tool, but there are many in the, that we need to address this. So, that's kind of what I'm hoping to get out of this, is, I mean, we're fortunate, we have a city manager that came from Fairfield, where they're implementing some of these other tactics to, you know, provide additional aid, and so I'm interested in hearing some of those ideas, because this is just a Band-Aid, and, and we're putting it in the same place year after year after year. So, that's what I'm hoping to get with this discussion, I appreciate you bringing it. I wasn't sure that it was coming so quickly, because I know that more people want to be a part of this conversation, and so I'm not even convinced that today, we need to make the final decision, because I do want to reach out to advocates and folks that specialize in this, and, you know, even have a conversation with our own staff here about the feasibility of some of these ideas. And then, I also want to hear from my colleagues, you know, what are some of your ideas, what are some of the folks in your district, what are their needs? But I, but I don't think that this Greyhound station, you know, where it's, you know, two consecutive nights minus 32 degrees, is going to solve our homeless issue in Vacaville. I'm on capsulano, you know, I'm willing to fight for funding with some of the different grants and stuff that are available from time to time, but I want to kind of have a consensus, or at least the support of the council, before I go and advocate for some of those things. And so that's why this is an important conversation to have now, because there still is some time.
I appreciate your comments. Part of this can help us give direction, so, part of the ask was put it on the next one, so that's what you got. That's why we're here, but hey, we're, I mean, we're here, and so, with that, and I know that, I, after you, I'm going to go ahead and open up, but I know that there's been a lot of discussions about this. It was never supposed to be forever, long-term, we know that that's going to be redeveloped at some point, and so, I appreciate the efforts that it takes to do this every year, and we keep addressing it. It doesn't get heavily utilized, but nonetheless, it's a, it's a need and it's an issue each year, especially in the cold weather. I was speaking to someone I collaborate with who provides assistance in Minneapolis, Minnesota, so you can imagine, they take advantage of it, because when it's cold, it's really cold. And so, it doesn't mean it's not dangerously cold here, it's just that it's so egregious in other places, that you, if you don't do that, they truly will, and so we can't ignore it. So, with that, I'm going to go ahead and open up to the public.
My name is Gail Thompson, and I'm a homeless advocate. And there's a couple of things I want to touch on tonight. Councilman Stockton opened the door on some of those. And the first thing I want to talk about is the location of the Warming Center as it is now. It's not designed to be a permanent location, I think we all understood that going in. However, the community centers are not a good location either. This serves a small segment of the population. They shouldn't take over an entire community center, or a large portion that's designed for the entire city. We don't ask the entire city to come into the Warming Center, so you need to keep that in mind. Secondly, I think Sergeant Stefanoi will laugh with me, that on the first night, when the Warming Center was open, there were five police cars lined up in front of that Warming Center, it was a caravan. Homeless would see the cars, they'd ride up on their bikes and take off. Turtle said, "Oh no, I might have a warrant," so he kept going. The staff stood in front, inside of this Warming Center, Skip and I came in, and you could cut the tension with a knife. Nobody was talking, there was nothing going on. By the end of the cooling, Warming Center, we were talking, there was engagement with those that were in the cots. Every night that that Warming Center was open, my husband and I brought food in every single night, at no cost to the city or anybody else, because not only are they cold, but they're hungry, too. Talking about the trailers and their location, the faith-based community does not have the funds to hold the homeless, they don't have it. They don't have taxpayers paying into their churches for these projects. This is a government problem that needs the help of the community. You talked about the trailers. Mr. Stockton, you and I talked the night of the JPA. We went down that avenue several years ago, when my son was still employed as a District Deputy Director for Congressman John Guaramini. FEMA trailers are still in use in Katrina. They aren't available, or they weren't at that time, and they're extremely expensive. The churches quit their nomadic sheltering, where we would take the homeless in for a week at a time in individual churches. Insurance companies said, "No, you're not doing that, the liability is too high." I don't know how you're going to get a church, even under your umbrella, the city's umbrella, if they're willing to do that, to cover that liability and provide a source for emptying the holding tanks and the power that it takes to run these FEMA trailers. And, the issue of, I keep looking at all of your reports, and it said you're going to work with the CREW, the faith-based community, and the homeless advocates, and then on another page, that was stated on August 29th last year of the homeless update, you are going to reach out and work with the homeless advocate. My husband and I have the Homeless Roundtable in Vacaville, because the city has not yet found it worth attending or hosting, as then Chief Carley did. It's a great outreach program, it gets a lot of agencies in touch with other agencies. And lastly, it says to reach out to the homeless, to the faith-based. Faith-based is tapped, we're tapped. We run the meal programs, we run the clothing programs, we run the hygiene programs, we have constituents that donate haircuts and shampoos. The faith-based community is tapped. We'll work with the council, and we want to work with the council, but you can't work with us if we're not informed and don't know what's going on. We don't receive emails, we're left in the dark, and it's up to us to contact the city. So, I appreciate your time, I appreciate you listening to me, and for the temporary basis, the Warming Center at the Old Greyhound Bus Station is the place to have it until the city has the funds for a permanent location. So again, I thank you, and I thank the CREW for their presence there, and I thank what the city does do, but we do need to do more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Prior to tonight's meeting, Ms. Thompson and I had a brief conversation outside, and, you know, of course, she brought this subject up. Well, I spent 18 years in Solano County Jail, so I've known quite a few homeless people, and the thing is, is that, yes, you cannot be a compassionate person without looking at, these are people who need help. But, the problem is, is that the policies that are done in the state of California are not really helping them, and I don't, you know, we need a place for them, we need a place where they can get drug treatment, because the vast majority have substance abuse issues. You can't solve their homeless problem, and at the same time, you know, fix their drug problem unless we have a permanent place for such things, and that's far beyond the capacity of a small city. It needs to change at the state level, the whole approach and policy is wrong. I absolutely see what she's getting at, and any compassionate person would agree that, yes, something needs to be done. I don't know how it can be done by the city of Vacaville.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening.
You know, we all want to figure out, what is the solution to the issue that we are confronted with? And I will tell you, the state is not our solution. We need to figure out a local solution to our local problem. You know, we've been here many times saying, "Hey, we're here to help." And I think the city, the faith-based, the advocates, I mean, you get enough of Gail and the women behind her, you're going to solve the problem tomorrow, let me tell you. So, I'm, I'm just here again to say, let's try to figure out what it is that we really want to do. And then, we can get behind that solution or solutions, and really come together as a community, because we, you as a government, we as faith-based or advocates, are not going to figure out the solution by ourselves. So, apologize for any headbutt, Mayor, but, you know, sometimes your emotions and your desire to help get ahead of you. So, having said that, we'll be back, as I said before, but I think we'll be back with some ideas and possibly some solutions. So, thank you again for listening to me again.
Thanks, Ken. I'll go ahead and close, public comment, and I'll reserve some of my comments to hear from my colleagues. Councilmember Wiley?
Thanks for the information, and then, the one chart that showed how many nights unique visitors there were was like 131 altogether, just in two nights, or however many nights it was. So, there were 131 people, nights, maybe multiple people, multiple nights.
This one right here?
But came out of, yes. So, if you look at total nights utilized, 131 people, I, you know what I'm saying, it was used a lot of times, sometimes by multiple people. So that's not just five nights, it's 131 nights, so that's, it's a, it's a real need. Did I add wrong?
Well, it's, it's five nights and sick nights, six nights.
Right.
With those numbers of unique individuals using it multiple nights.
Yes. So, the individuals, if you add them all together, a lot of people use that, the Warming Center that we have. So, I wanted to know, you know, before we talked about it, this location, there were a lot of perceived issues, like, oh, there's a daycare, oh, there's going to be a lot of problems, oh, there's going to be a lot of problems, but sometimes the perceived issues don't materialize. So I just wondered, what were the real impacts to the, to the people at the shopping center? Because it is kind of away from it, so what were the real impacts, and is there any way that we can minimize those if we're keeping that location?
Great question. And I think the first year, the impacts, while I think the shopping, the business owners were very concerned, but I think honestly, the efforts actually improved the shopping center, because work between CREW, I think Public Works, working with Caltrans, and shutting down the Cliffside Park and Ride, really eliminated a lot of the, some of the negative impacts of having homeless in the community at that shopping center location, went away when we shut down the park and ride. So that really improved the shopping center from that perspective. The first, also in 2024, we had one call for service, and then last year, we didn't have any calls for service. So, one of the changes we made from the first year to the second, the first year, you might remember, we had, we were trying to figure out, we hadn't done it before, so we were, it was new, we put a big privacy fence up, that fence ended up being, didn't work as well as we thought, it kind of collected trash, so the second year, we didn't do that. So, really, just driving by the center during the day, you wouldn't know what it was for. You know, and we only usually activate the center from 7:00 at night till 6:00 or 7:00 in the morning, so the use is really when most people aren't, aren't shopping in the shopping center, so there's not a lot of folks there, so...
All right. So then, the rest of the year, like now, are there problems with the homeless at the shopping center now?
And I would let Sergeant Stefanoi comment on that.
Not significantly, no.
All right. Because, mostly because that park and ride has been eliminated, probably changed the things at the shopping center as well.
Oh, absolutely, unequivocally, yes.
All right. And so the one person that came multiple times was the restaurant owner, so like, you haven't heard issues at the restaurant with problems with the homeless now?
We didn't, we didn't receive any calls from any of the business owners last year, after, I think a few of them came to the council meeting, but after that, we didn't hear anything. We tried to really create a way for them to connect with us, and we've, you know, we, the first year, we did business walks, handed out our business cards, gave them QR codes, so that they could sign up for alerts when the Warming Center is activated, really tried to create that line of communication with them, and we didn't end up hearing anything last year.
Right. So I totally understand the concerns about not wanting to have, hey, this is the permanent place, but then when you look at the benefits versus the problems with other places, I think it's, it's reasonable to plan to have it there again this year. The other thing I also wanted to kind of clarify from Councilmember Stockton, so, I also am kind of aware with the issue at a church at Fairfield, where they utilize the parking lot, but it's not just a Warming Center, they have it there like all the time, so people don't have to put their parked cars on streets throughout. Is that the same church you're talking about?
I believe so.
So it's not, so I think that's a really worthy thing to try to look for a way to have something like that, where people can park off the street or in a safe place and not be threatened, you know, at night. And I know neighborhoods don't want a lot of homeless vehicles there, so I think that that was, that's a great program they have. I haven't actually been over there, but it's very structured, and, you know, there's certain... But it's very structured and, you know, there's certain hours. And there is a person there that checks that the car is registered. So I feel like that's a great program that we could look into sometime. But I'm not comparing that to the warming center because I think it's a different kind of program.
Yeah, and that's why I brought it up earlier, whether or not to have this conversation now or, you know, because it's overlapping, but it's not the same. But I will say that there's, that program is subsidized heavily by the city.
By the city?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, you're right. I understand it. There are two different things. One is more for warming. One is actually a shelter-like environment. Yeah. Councilmember Silva?
All right, so what's going on with the community center spots? So all this information isn't really new. We've already been presented this last year. So nothing here is necessarily novel. But can we just rehash what was the issue with the community centers? I recall some of them, but I'll just let you guys explain that. Or I can echo, and you tell me if I'm wrong.
Sure, I'm just going to get to that slide.
Okay, okay.
And put it up. So really just the challenges with community centers, they are large facilities and it's a little bit hard to kind of lock down, that's not the right word, you know, isolate which sections of the facility we'd be using for the warming center. You know, we have offices, areas where we take rentals and registration. Some of those areas we would want to, you know, limit access to. And so because they are larger facilities, you know, it just requires a different level of security within them. That's, that's one of the main challenges. The other challenges that, they are frequently programmed and have rentals. So one of the things we can't do with a community center, I'm not going to be able to say, we're only going to use U-Lattice or we're only going to use McBride for the whole winter season. We would not necessarily be able to be consistent with that, not knowing how long, how frequently we would need to activate it. So that's another challenge as well. One of the things with 1041 Mason Street, we know that's the location. It doesn't require us to set it up and break it down each time. So there's a few different things. But with council direction, we'll make either, either location work.
Yeah, I mean, the recent limited conversations I've had was, well, even last year, I'm like, the reality is that's probably going to be the spot for the, you know, at least a couple or a few years. It was championed by two council members that this would be an ideal site. And, but there was pushback. So that, you know, that changed the conversation. We had an opportunity to pursue something at the Quality Inn. We backed off of that. So for me, where I'm even at with this whole conversation, it came up, absolutely. The council needs to have a discussion. All the key stakeholders need to be at play or, you know, at present to discuss what are we willing to do and not to do? We don't waste staff's time. And we're all on the same, or hopefully close to the same page, or at least a mutual understanding of what's acceptable or not. And also what's a reality or not. I think the main thing where some business owners privately inform me with the current site is that once they again close, once the help between state and our local police department, so huge, huge, huge impact, just putting those K-rails up to prevent ongoing traffic coming in, parking, people staying there long-term. That in combination with enforcement to helping people, encourage them to make the right decisions was really key in helping protect both, all the residents, all the property owners and as well as the, if you will, the individuals that are seeking shelter. So to me, I think in the best interest of everybody's time, we do absolutely need to have a dedicated time, not, you know, not on a Tuesday night, but something where, at a time where we're all coming to the same place to hash all this out, put everything on table.
Well, I would just add, I think that what needs to happen to your point is just a dedicated workshop of our time.
Yeah, yeah.
It's long overdue.
Mayor?
Vice Mayor Chauvin.
Thank you so very much. Well, my colleagues are aware that I was championing this issue with our homeless for the past couple of years and there was pushback. However, I'm happy to have, hear others speak up on this issue. Now, a couple of things I would like to share. First of all, I, the warming center, I did have an, or I took an opportunity to go by there and the council member Stockton had mentioned the police presence. Well, not really. And I'm glad that Gail had an opportunity to clarify that. That occurred at the beginning, but as time went on, all of that changed. And I wanted to, and I want to share about faith-based. Pastor Dr. Sam Morris is the minister there. And they do offer a warming center. And they do have a contract with the city of Fairfield. It was not, it's not a warming and cooling center. The church itself offers many programs. He seeks out a lot of grants. And the reason I know this, I helped him with developing his program there. And it is a great program that's being rendered. Now, if we recall, I had inquired about how much money the city allocates or utilizes for our unsheltered. And before, and last year, we received an update. We received a report and it was an astounding number amount. But of course, that included personnel, staff time. There was a lot included in that. But there was enough money there for us to take care of our own. And that, I think that's the direction, what I'm hearing tonight. We are ready to look and take care of our own. And with that being said, I would like to, and I want to thank Gail and Skip for starting a roundtable. But that is something that the city, in my opinion, needs to do. I don't think a workshop or a briefing, a presentation is going to be sufficient. We need to bring all the stakeholders around the table and hash this out and plan and follow through on the decisions made by the stakeholders. So I know we are not taking suggestions tonight. However, I would like to put that out there that we consider the city having its own homeless or unsheltered, we could call it whatever we want, roundtable to address this purpose. And I'm happy to hear Stockton mention that the grants that come in to the JPA, he's willing to push and push for Vacaville. Well, you can only push if you're pushing with something in mind. What you're going to tell them, you're going to say, oh, Vacaville now is doing this, this and this. There's a plan. Yes, you deserve this large amount of money. I just think it's time to be strategic about this and be sincere and move, move, move ahead. So I do support keeping it at the present location until which time we can get our act together. Thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. I think the recommendation for tonight was based upon what the ask was by Councilmember Stockton. Is before we get to the winter, let's figure out what we're going to do in the moment. It clearly is, there's a, there's a near-term problem and then there's the long-term problem. It's like, where do you begin with this? I hear things and maybe from staff's recommendation, one thing that you're kind of looking for is direction. You may not have to have the full answer. You may have to come back at another time as far as a greater understanding of what an option would look like if it's this building versus those other buildings so that the council could make a clear decision. So that it's not just, well, let's just make a whimsical decision now so that it's backed up for reasons. I believe I was one of those who recommended that it was at the, you know, at the Greyhound Center because of its proximity, because of its separation, its ability to manage it, its size. There's a lot of reasons for it. Now, the moment you come up with an idea, it's easy to then feel the pushback because it's like, well, that's part of a neighborhood center or it's part of a shopping center or whatever. There's always going to be whatever that unintended consequence is. And that's what we've had to work for through the last few years. I personally could see it being there for another year. What I don't want to say is, is, okay, what happens when we're 10 years in? We're in the same place. So we're going to have to solve this. I think it's time for a presentation from the JPA to the council. It's good to understand what's going on with the decisions that were made for staffing. I do believe the city of Vacaville was fronting some of the management of that, if I recall. It'd be nice for that to be part of a study session on. Right. And so now it's time to pull it all together. And so Councilmember Stockton kicked it off. It's long overdue. It's not cold yet. But we're going to be having these conversations, so let's have them. We could, we could debate and disagree or agree on things, but I think we all believe that there needs to be solutions here. We do, we do know that local homeless are local to Vacaville. We know that the pandemic really exacerbated the numbers. And I'll be the first one to say that when I became the chief of police, the city manager at the time said, the one thing that I'm going to task you with is addressing homelessness. And you can't solve homelessness alone, which is why it turned from an ad hoc group, I turned it into a roundtable. Not that we were going to be the government to solve it, but we would create the atmosphere for all the stakeholders to come together. Not that the government was going to pay for everything, but the relationships within a community, the nonprofits, the faith-based, the healthcare system, the education system, the legal system, could all work together to help identify them. And believe it or not, here we are in 2025 and it's a distant memory that the city of Vacaville was recognized nationally as A model. Maybe not the model, but it was highly recognized. And I think it's just time to get back to that place. And we can solve some of these, but. Thank you. But I do think we're all looking for these solutions. And I think the direction coming out of tonight is we're going to have to make a decision soon on the location. We know that that location is ideal. Maybe not for everyone, but it's ideal for the moment. But what is going to be the alternative next year? And especially as a transition? And really have a deeper conversation sooner rather than later. Can we do that?
Yeah, sure. And I would like to invite our director from Housing and Community Services, Tamara Coleman. She has some more information on this.
And then I'll tell you.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. You guys have beat me to the punch just a little bit. In your strategic planning documents, you actually do have direction for the city to develop a homeless plan of action that outlines some of the concerns that you are talking about right now, tonight. In the last couple of weeks, I've started taking some initial planning steps, meeting with members of Crew, meeting with the executive director of Opportunity House, who provides a lot of case management services for the city just to kind of do some preliminary investigation or not investigation, but get some ideas from those that are working on the street, day-to-day, working with our homeless population on some ideas or what they're seeing before I have a chance to reach out to members of the homeless roundtable. In fact, Officer, or Sergeant Stefano and I just met last week regarding this entire topic. In addition, so my plan is to work with our city manager to determine what that plan of action would look like, whether or not that would be an internal document for staff to use or something more external that the council would outline actual priorities and action steps. So now I'm hearing, I don't really need to game plan with Sevita. It sounds like you guys are desiring a full-on action plan with action steps and deliverables. Also, I've been looking at identifying an ongoing funding source to support some of these activities, to support the case management and services that would come along with having some type of facility that would provide what Vacaville needs to serve its homeless population. Up on Cap Solano doing a presentation, I actually am working with the executive director and we are anticipating him coming and doing a presentation on October 14th, October 14th meeting about what Cap Solano is doing and the vision of Cap Solano in addressing homelessness in a regional capacity. I've also had several conversations with the homeless program manager with Fairfield on what they are doing in Fairfield. So we've talked about their programs, how they're funded. We've looked at some of their contracts and MOUs. So I am aware of what's going on in Fairfield and what's working. We've had some conversations with Natalie Over and Valeo and what's been successful as far as them opening, recently opening their navigation center. So all of these things are happening in the background. So I just thought I'd let you guys know that staff is working on exactly what you're talking about tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm happy to take any questions if there are.
I think it's all going to be coming, but I appreciate the teaser at the end. How about that? I do appreciate it. Councilmember Freeman?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that right now, the weather's just around the corner, so we got to do something. So it's going to be getting cold. So right now, what's in front of us is to approve Mason Street as a temporary place. We know it's not a long-term solution. And then also, I would like to see something nailed down for a date soon, like tomorrow or next week or in the next couple of weeks that we can get together on this roundtable, you know? The part that's frustrating to me in situations like this, I know that there's a lot of reasons for Brown Act, but this type of public interest in trying to solve stuff like this, oftentimes, you know, we're hogtied with Brown Act, right? You know, because I know Jeanette has a heart. I know Sarah has a heart. I know everybody up here has a heart for doing something. But it's not like we can just pick up the phone, hey, what are you thinking? What do you think? You know, I mean, we get tied up with this sort of thing. But I'd like to, I'd like to see something go on the calendar, like really soon. And also, one last thing is how can we give some relief to some of these organizations that are spending their money to feed, to help, you know?
Well, I think that's the importance of having a study session. And again, I simply come, and Skip and Gail know this, I come with seven years of running a roundtable every single month. For seven years.
I still have all the agendas?
Yes. So there are real solutions out there. It's just part of the challenge that needs to come out of a study session, but also to be giving direction on what is the role of a roundtable and when does it require council direction and policy? So there's clarity in that. And that's, that is from a historical standpoint where things can kind of collide a little bit. Here's examples of how do you elevate it so there can be a council decision on something? And that's what really should happen. But I think a study session is in order and I think the entire council would agree. Let's allow the city manager to coordinate with staff to consider which resources need to be available. So yes, it's urgent, but not so quickly except for making a decision on maybe a warming center that we miss the opportunity to really organize and coordinate what an agenda would be for a day. And just say, this is one topic. And I know, meeting with our city manager, the preference is in the future is when we got issues, let's separate them from a council meeting and create study sessions.
And one last thing, I was able to make it to one of the roundtables with Gail and Skip. And I will make an effort, a strong effort to continue doing that, but also encourage my fellow council members to start attending these roundtables because they know what's going on.
And again, we'll have to deal with that because when I ran it, council members would come and they couldn't comment because of the Brown Act. So we'll, we just need to coordinate what we do and then make sure the entire council's informed and is making decisions on policy, for sure. But I think we've got some clear direction. You made a motion, at least for this year, so that we're not, we're not delaying this process. Is there a second on that particular motion? Okay, we have a motion? Motion and a second, okay. Roll call? This is just for the location for this year only. Councilmember Silva, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
Yeah, just, another theme, just echoing a large sentiment within the community. So we're talking about addressing services within this population. There needs to be in some form or way discussion on how that involves our immigrant community, particularly during these times and how it's, how they're being impacted currently.
What was that, Mike? I didn't hear that.
To involve the impact on the immigrant community.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and I think the roundtables. Well, and I think that roundtables, when properly functioning, all these issues come to the service. They just do. Anyone who's been around long enough understands the, the real success that came out of Vacaville didn't come from government, it came from the community, it came from the faith base, it came from the nonprofits. They created the navigators. They institutionalized, there's a better way. There were cities and counties that came from all over to come see what was happening in Vacaville. Let's not lose sight of that. So I haven't forgotten. Do you have a roll call?
Vice Mayor Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Stockton?
No for the location, but yes for the warming center.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Yes.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Mayor Carly?
Yes. Well, hopefully, this tees up some further discussion, and for those of you, and I know Councilmember Stockton, you're, you both are on the JPA, but hopefully, when we get the report out, it's going to really help where the funding comes. I know that it's, we just need to understand where this issue lies, and focus on our local issue, and see where we can get the funding. But it will require the community's assistance. So, thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
So I understand we're approving the Mason Street for this year's location, and we're coming back on October 14th with the JPA presentation, and then at that time, we'll also give you some update, if possible, and we'll have a study session date identified.
That's right.
Great. Thank you.
Does that work?
Yeah. That works for me.
Yeah.
I also have a meeting with Deshaun tomorrow, so this helps.
Perfect. Perfect. Yes, thank you. Thank you for that, and that's the last of our agenda items. Right now, we are going to be going back into closed session, we have two items. I reported, there was nothing to report out of the first two. I anticipate there will be nothing to report out on the last two. So with that, we'll stand in the German, goodnight Vacaville.